Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this Tampa City Council meeting to order. I yield to Councilmember Miranda for the invocation today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I'd like to first of all thank Councilman Goode for making the arrangements to have Bishop Michael Lewis provide the invocation this morning. The invocation this morning by Bishop Lewis will be virtually... May I introduce the good Bishop Michael Lewis, the pastor of First Victory of Perthetler Church at 1920 East Lyne Avenue. He will be celebrating 40 years of preaching on November 29th. He is a parent of three adult children, Mike Jr., Hope, and Jordan, and he is a business owner of Little Eagles Preschool, a six-month-to-12-years center, as well as the Scholar Christian Academy, a kindergarten-through-12th-grade private Christian school. He is the presiding bishop of Legacy Fellowship of Churches and Ministry. He enjoys playing chess, spending time with his two Walt Rydlers, Bulgard, and Puppy, and most importantly, he lives by the theme, "Only what you do for Christ will last." Welcome, Bishop Lewis. Thank you very much, Bishop.
Please stand for the invocation. A man standing for the pledge.
Councilmen, let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this opportunity to come and to invoke your presence, your power, and your purpose over this meeting. Father, we ask now that your divine will would be accomplished. We ask, Father, that we would trust in you and lean not to our own understanding, but in all of our ways acknowledge you. Now, Father, God our minds, God our understanding, help us make the best decisions for the city and for the community. We do pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Vieira.
Here.
Goode.
Here.
Carlson. Dingfelder.
Here.
Citro.
Carlson's here. He's here.
Miranda.
Here.
Maniscaco.
Here. All right, we're going to go to approval of the agenda and then...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm...
We have a full quorum.
If I could just say my preface to today's meeting, because we are going CMT, I apologize.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of City Council. Martin Shelby, the City Council Attorney. Today is Thursday, November 19th, 2020, and this is the regular agenda meeting of the Tampa City Council here at the Tampa Convention Center. This meeting is being held during the COVID-19 state of emergency and is being conducted live with an in-person quorum. And did you acknowledge that, Madam Clerk?
That is correct. It's a full quorum.
Thank you. An in-person quorum with the option of remote participation using what is referred to by the State of Florida statutes and rules as Communications Media Technology, or CMT. The meetings are held in accordance with the emergency rules of procedure as adopted by Resolution Number 2020-225 and as amended by Resolution Number 2020-490. The public and the citizens of the City of Tampa are able to watch today's meeting on Spectrum Channel 640 and Frontier Channel 15 and on the Internet at tampagov.net/live stream, one word. And now, since this meeting is being conducted with the options of CMT, the following alternative methods have been established for members of the public to offer public comment or during public hearings today: in person here at the Tampa Convention Center at 333 South Franklin Street; on the Internet or web at tampagov.net; public comment by voicemail, by U.S. mail; and to speak remotely at a kiosk that is outside this room if because of COVID-19 they don't want to enter the meeting room. They also have the opportunity to preregister to speak remotely on the GoToWebinar platform. Counsel, with regard to the public comments, they are, per council's rules, to be heard at the start of the meeting. Comments specific to a public hearing will be heard when it happens on the agenda. The written comments that have been received by mail or email have been distributed to City Council and will be included in the permanent record of today's meeting. And with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I turn the meeting back to you, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. A few announcements before we go to the addendum, an approval of the addendum for the agenda. We received a memo to pull item number 61 for discussion with staff available. I know it's a two-part, 61 and 62 go together, but I think we can discuss it all then, correct, Councilman Dingfelder?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number 68, we're going to take up first after public comment.
And item number 13, too.
Oh, no, no, that's in the addendum. These are just announcements. Item number 71, we received a memo from the administration yesterday that it be continued. That is a CRB discussion to a workshop in February of 2021. This was received yesterday, so if you are here to speak on it, you can speak on it. We won't be taking action or discussing it today, but if you're here to speak on it, you will be able to speak on it.
And that's the, for the Citizens Review Board?
Yes, sir. CRB, item number 71. Then that is it for announcements. If I can get an approval or a motion to approve the agenda and the...
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to continue. Item number 73, file number CM20-65289 until January 14th, 9:00 a.m.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilman Goode.
A move.
We have a second from Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
You want that as a separate motion?
He just made that motion on the floor. Was there a second to that motion? Or was there already a motion on the floor to approve the addendum and the agenda and addendum? I'm just confused.
All right, let's take the motion for Citro first. Citro makes the motion to remove item number... I'm sorry, continue item 73 to the January what date?
14th, 9:00 a.m.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I can. Mr. Citro, is that under staff reports, or do you want it specifically at the 9:00 a.m. time certain before public comment?
Under staff reports.
Under staff reports, thank you.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, a second from Councilman Miranda, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, Mr. Chairman, if I can, can we just take a minute to go over the addendum so the public is clear and also that counsel has a roadmap?
Okay.
There is a new business item that was submitted regarding a grant, I believe, a sub-recipient agreement. Without getting into it, counsel, you've received the memo. Is that going to be added to the agenda as a walk-on? Will that be taken after public comment, or will it be taken later on in the agenda, just so that the administration is aware of when you intend to take that? New business.
Mr. Chairman, for an order.
Go ahead, Councilman Goode.
I don't believe we, when Mr. Shelby interrupted, we had a motion on the floor. I don't think that first motion was clear, and then Mr. Citro came in in reference to the other continuance.
Right.
So there were two motions on the floor, and I don't think one has been cleared yet.
And what I'd like to do is review, excuse me, review the material before you take that motion, just so in case there's any additional direction.
Thank you for clarification.
Just one other question.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. And if it's out of order, that's fine. Tell me, tell me, did you mention items 75 and 60?
It's part of the addendum. We're going over it now. Councilman, I'm sorry, Mr. Shelby was going over it.
Yeah, that, thank you, yeah, exactly. That's, thank you for bringing that up. Okay, item number 13 is a request by Councilman Carlson to have that put under, removed from the consent docket for staff to be present. Is that correct, Councilman?
Yes, please.
Okay, item number 67 is a motion by Councilman Dingfelder requesting that that item be continued to December 3rd of 2020. Is that your pleasure to do that now, Councilman? Or do you want to have any comments about it when number 67 comes up? Do you want to take it up?
No, 67 and 75 were companion items, and speaking with staff midweek, and I thought, well, in speaking with staff midweek, it looked like this was going to be a very, very long meeting, and we need a lot of time to discuss those planning issues. So staff and I talked about it, and we, and it was recommended that 67 and 75 be continued for two weeks to December 3rd, and that's why I wrote the memo and made that request.
And is that going to be your motion, then?
Yes.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, and that takes care of 75. And number 71, counsel, did you want to, before you make that motion, did you want to hear from public comment first, or do you want to take that motion at this time, knowing that it's going to be continued after public comment? Certainly, the public has the right to speak, and certainly counsel is interested in what the public has to say, as is the administration, and we'll take all those comments into advisement as you move forward, but the decision or the request of the administration has been to ask the council to continue it to the February workshop date. So does counsel wish to hold that motion or make it at this time?
What is the pleasure of counsel? We're going to have public comment either way.
Could I?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir. Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I think, I think we should go ahead and make the motion now to defer it, but of course we need to take public comment also. As I understand it, we've all been in touch with the, with the staff and legal department, and legal department and others have been in regular conversation with ACLU, PBA, Tampa for Justice, and others. And the bottom line is that, as of this week, the community's not happy with the proposal that's on the table. And so with that in mind, and the feedback from City Council, I understand that the mayor's office has asked to have additional time to go back and try to negotiate or have talks in earnest to try to make the proposal better. And so for anyone who's going to speak out on it today, or anyone who is concerned about this, you know, we all are pushing to try to get a better solution, and the feedback we get today will help add to it. But I believe, as a big proponent of making a better solution, I think more time will give all the parties a better chance to make this an even better solution, hopefully a model that can be copied by other cities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a motion from Carlson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
If I can have a specific date, counsel, that will be February 25th of 2021, and that would be 9:00 a.m. at the workshop session.
Thank you very much.
That's part of the motion, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Dingfelder.
In regard to 68, did we deal with that?
68, yes. It's going to be taken first on the agenda after public comment. We're moving it up.
Okay.
And now, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, now the motion to approve the agenda and the addendum.
May I have a motion to approve? Motion from Councilman Goode, who's the second. Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes care of that. Before we go into public comment, you'll have three minutes to speak. Those that are here from the public to speak will go first, because we have quite a few that are registered, telephone virtually. You'll have three minutes to speak. If you could alternate podiums, one person at one podium, they sanitize, the person at the next podium, they sanitize it, and back and forth. Please address, counsel, we're here to listen to you. You have the three minutes to speak. There are numbers on the back of your chair. We don't know how many people we're going to get for public comment, just to keep it organized, so we'll call it in order. I believe item number one is the lady in the red jacket, and then we'll go from there. Everybody will have an opportunity to speak. Whenever you're ready, ma'am, begin. And before, I forgot one more thing. Regarding the staff reports, and we didn't talk about this, which staff need to stay and which need to be released?
Mr. or Chief Bennett?
Yep.
Maybe we can get some assistance from CTV to help the chief out?
Thank you. Can we get his microphone on?
Is it on?
Nope, not yet.
I think staff's coming now.
This one's.
I think they did that on purpose, Mr. Bennett. That's what I would have done.
Chairman, I don't need it, just to make a few comments, unless it's affecting the audio for the record.
Do you want to just come to this podium up here?
That's fine. We'll finish here first. Good morning, counsel. Good morning, public. John Bennett, Chief of Staff. Reference now item 68. It was kind of a bifurcated motion for public safety. TPD had submitted a memo about their annual strategic plan, and I just need to know to alert them whether they're needed on that item, or it's going to be just solely focused on, on fire.
Councilman Citro, Councilman Vieira, on item 68.
If I may, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Yes, 68 is, is meant to be both for police and fire, but my understanding is, is that Tampa Police Department has a master plan given every three to five years. So the motion is to be dealt with both with police and fire, but most of my remarks will be dealing with fire at this time, because it appears that police already has a three-to-five-year plan.
Okay, great. So do we need Chief Dugan? That's the question.
No, not for my motion. No, sir.
Okay, he's available online if we need to. We change our mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Bennett, I'm sorry.
Yes?
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So as related to that, is, is, I mean, we have a little fire department issue. Should we delay that, or should we?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I would say no. I know that there are some personnel issues going on with fire, but I'll discuss some different issues with fire that I believe require the attention of the City Council in this city promptly. So while the formal responsive report as to the master plan, I'll leave that up to the administration. I'd still like to hear what's, what's there, what's forthcoming, et cetera. But as to the item itself and the substance, I say we go full speed ahead, because the, the issues are compelling.
No disagreement from staff.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So what we're saying is today that we're going to bring the chief back to hear his master plan. They're just going to use the written report that he's submitted?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, sir.
So are we saying that we're just going to let fire, let police come back at a different time, or just look at the report that they're going to submit?
They submitted a memo. The report happens annually, so it's always updated, and they submitted that through memorandum. So I just didn't know if you needed him to come here and say that.
Counsel, may I make a recommendation at the end of number 68, if you think additional action needs to be taken, or?
I think, you know, for me, I think, you know, if the item 68 was for a public safety master plan to consider City of Tampa, I think we need to hear, hear both. I know we have a lot of things on the agenda, but public safety is a main concern in the city, and I think that both need to be heard. I don't know how long that, but you think it'll be that long, real long, chief, on his, I mean, he's already got it laid out?
Counsel's pleasure.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm amenable to that for Councilman Goode, obviously. Most of the issues that I had to be presented at this time, just given the, the news with Tampa Fire that recently came out, are of a compelling nature to certain fire stations and areas. And again, with the three-to-five-year plan that Tampa Police Department comes out with, I was thinking that we could have Chief Dugan return at that time when this issue returns to us, but obviously I wouldn't be objection or object to that.
I'll be amenable to that, Mr. Vieira.
You sure?
I'll be amenable to that. That's not a problem. As long as we do get something back so the public can hear it publicly, versus just having a plan in front of us. The public needs to hear what the plan is for the city.
Yes, sir.
So I'm amenable to that.
So what's the end result?
We're going to go forward with the fire department speaking, and the police department, since they've, they've submitted their thing.
Today?
Yeah, we'll do fire today. That'll be at the beginning of the agenda.
The beginning of the agenda. Thank you, sir. Are there any other items that staff can be released on under staff reports, Mr. Chairman, do you think, or should they be on standby for them?
Anybody else? Any other suggestions? Any numbers? Any staff reports? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now begin public comment. Ma'am, go ahead. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Teresa Miller. Hello, it's good to see everyone again. Usually I'm here speaking about substance abuse prevention, but today I'm here to speak about a different type of prevention, and that's preventing the demoralization of our police force here in Tampa with respect to the proposed revisions of the City, of the Citizen Review Board. Number one, allowing the City Council to be the sole determining factor of who sits on the board will lead to extreme biased outcomes and unfairly misrepresent our community. If allowed, this will put the integrity of the board in jeopardy by potentially relying on people who get most of their information about police procedures from watching Bad Boys, Law &amp; Order, or Miami Vice. This is equivalent to putting a student in as principal for a school. They don't have the education, expertise, or knowledge to do the job. In addition, excluding experienced officers who have a deep understanding of the issues from the board is truly irrational. Number two, giving citizens subpoena rights undermines the legal system and is not essential to justice, given especially that these police officers are brought, those that have complaints are brought up against many, many, several other boards. Number three, allowing independent and unnecessary investigators and attorneys requires significant additional funding. Where's this money going to come from? What budgets are going to be caught, and are we going to be taxed for this unnecessary expense? If this board is a sham, as some advocate groups have claimed and believe, then maybe we should do away with the board, but certainly we shouldn't give it greater powers. Our city can't afford to have our dedicated men and women on the police force retiring early or quitting because of the lack of support of some elected officials. This is compromising their jobs. Advocate groups that assert they care about the safety in our community clearly don't care about my family's safety. Otherwise, they would not be advocating for these changes. These groups are destabilizing our police force by undermining the training, experience, and diligence of these committed officers. In these times of uncertainty, we've been told we're only safe if we stay at home and wear a mask. However, there's one thing I'm very certain about, that I trust the police. My family's life depends on it, and every family in Tampa depends on this trust. Tampa will continue to be a vibrant, safe city only if the police are allowed to do their job. Infusing a sense of apprehension and doubt in our police force goes against everything they have been trained to do, which is to protect every person in Tampa. I support Mayor Castor's recommendations, and I hope you do, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are we going to do clapping, or?
Okay, no clapping.
Thank you for allowing me. I am the president of the Retired City of Tampa Fire and Police Association.
Sounds like the mic's not...
Mic's not working.
Doesn't work? Let me go to this one.
It's been sanitized. Go ahead.
My name's Bobby Moody. I'm president of the City of Tampa Retired Fire and Police Association. We have 284 members, and we vote. We're here to support the PBA, Mayor Castor, and Chief Dugan. We believe that we do not want a Citizens Review Board with investigative and subpoena powers. We believe in the mayor and the chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
How's it going? My name is Shiv Shukla, and I'll just straight to the point. When you have an organization with a history and record like TPD's, something is wrong and something needs to be done. From the Viking Wall Black Investigation in 2015, to how use of force increased 24% under Chief Dugan, to how TPD consistently lies to the public, like when Chief Dugan said that no tear gas and rubber bullets were used against the protesters. I was there. Many of those behind me were there. We know what happened. The press knows what happened, yet there is no accountability whatsoever. That's what I'm here to talk about, accountability. We've been to every City Council meeting and every Citizens Review Board meeting since then, and there's still no accountability for what TPD did during the protest, what TPD did to Dominic Markey, and what TPD does to brown and black communities every single day. You cannot expect the out-of-control force to control, monitor, and discipline itself. The Professional Standards Bureau is a joke. Do you know how many use-of-force complaints TPD has? Do you know how many officers on the streets today have had multiple use-of-force allegations against them? No, we don't, because there is no oversight, and the entire police department is shielded from public accountability and insight. This needs to change, and you all have that power. The Citizens Review Board, as it sits right now, is toothless. Let's talk about them. The CRB can't investigate the police unless the police department themselves opens up an investigation first. They can't subpoena documents or subpoena police officers to testify. They can't discipline officers. They can't even implement policy. But that was by design, right? The police are so scared of any sort of scrutiny that they will fight tooth and nail over the smallest of reforms. That's why all these police union people are here. They are terrified of having to answer for their actions. There's also a lot of Blue Lives Matter books here this morning, so let me be as clear as I can. Blue lives don't matter. It's not a blue life, it's a blue shirt. Being a cop is a job, and jobs have accountability. So get a grip, let's all... So get a grip, let's all come back to reality, and let's make some changes. These guys want to be able to go out in the streets and do whatever they want, and we can put a stop to that, and we can draw a line in the sand. And a great place to start is by revamping the CRB. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
And tis not Tampa, Florida.
It's a good thing to see the people that stand
that garbage invocation y'all do every Thursday, and that garbage pledge allegiance to the flag y'all do every Thursday, in your face saying it. It's a good thing to see young people are seeing that, and other people are seeing it outside of religion, and understand you can't stand for these garbage preachers, garbage imams, garbage rabbis coming before on city time, on city taxpayers' money, talking garbage about a blessed city. And all we seeing is wretchedness. The garbage lady that came up here the first speaker and talked about she feel unsafe, that's racist and it's insensitive. It's racist and it's insensitive, because it's we African people. It's we black and brown people, not no MFing blue people that feel the wretchedness of the Tampa Police Department. We don't get protection either way. We don't get protection from being safe in our neighborhoods, and you see what's going on in our communities. And we don't get protection from trying to be a person walking the street or riding a damn bicycle. Over 600,000 bicycle stops, and that's when the investigation was done. So it might be up to a million. So they evolving hatred, they evolving racism, they evolving aggression, and these MFs sitting in here want you to agree with that, talking about they feel unsafe. It's us that's feeling those damn prisons. It's us that's feeling the pain. It's us that's being suspended and expelled from those schools. It's us that's feeling those prisons. It's our children, it's us as adults, as a grown man, still can't walk the street or ride in your car and feel safe without being harassed by the damned police. And y'all want us to smile with that and stand and pledge allegiance to a rag? Y'all talk about the Confederate flag that red, white, and blue have done more damage to African people since 1776 and beyond. And y'all want us to cooperate with that? Y'all want a simulation. While y'all do gentrification, y'all want a simulation. Y'all want to push us in places where there's no bus routes, there's no nothing, there's no services, and y'all want us to live with that. And the world is evolving technologically, and there's no technology for black people. And for our representative of District Five Orlando Goos, we want these white folks start being held to percentages. We're 26% of this population, we want 26% of this city budget. And we want a reflection across the board. We want a reflection in the Florida State Penitentiary. Fine crimes white people are committing and arrest them for it. Let the percentage reflect proportionately instead of always reflecting disproportionately when it's negative stuff. Infant mortality rate disproportionately, life expectancy disproportionately, education disproportionately. And these a-holes talking about they feel unsafe. B, you ain't never experienced nothing unsafe in your whole damn life. You have never experienced nothing safe. You ain't never experienced being at the damn park and having people fire gunshots, or sitting in your yard and having people fire gunshots and two dead. You have never experienced that. And you down here talking about you feel unsafe.
Thank you very much. Please address the board, thank you very much. Next speaker?
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
No, the microphone isn't working.
Oh.
The day of technological difficulty.
Do you want me to go to this one?
Let's see if it works.
Hi, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is PJ Steele, and I first want to say that I'm very disheartened people won't stand for the American flag. It's the best country to live in, so if you don't like it, maybe live somewhere else.
Yeah, you go somewhere else.
Okay. So I just want to say, I support Jane Castor in allowing TPD on the Citizens Review Board. And it's very important for officers, current and former, to be able to give perspective. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Good morning, this is Mike Morgan. Sounds like it. My name is Fred Rock, and I'm here in support of Jane Castor's revision of the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Good morning. I am Sally C. Lee with the Volunteer Missionaries Society Penitentary Fund. And the only reason I came down here, because God sent me. I don't ever come down here and disturb you all with what you're doing, and it's not always right. So I'm just here to deliver His word to you all, and you can do whatever you want to do with it. Governmental leaders, city councilmen, I'm here on the issue of black American homelessness. Our people is in the streets, all over, the police running them, heartlines taking up all the bus stops. They can't stand or sit nowhere. My program for homelessness is closed because the libraries are closed. As same as the porters was during the delivery of the money, we were locked out the small business. We couldn't even get in to apply. And I'm just here to tell you that God is not pleased with what is going on and how His people is being treated and chased down all over town, thrown out the little park on Nebraska where they get together and be, y'all got all the amusement parks and all the beautiful places to go. Our people can't even be in the park homeless. And I don't know who the perpetrator is behind the way they are being treated, but God's been waking me up for three, four weeks now, 3:00 in the morning. Go down there, tell them what I said, that it's not going to be nice the next time that He has to render justice. And the pandemic is not going nowhere until our people get treated fairly. And I don't know whether He gonna visit personally or what. I don't know. He don't tell me how He gonna do His justice. I work for Him, I just deliver the message to the leaders. And that's up to them to carry it out, but it needs to stop. He says cease and desist the way that y'all are doing these homeless people, black Americans, men and women, old and young, are the only ones not being served. And this need to change, and this is the word of God. And the pandemic is not going nowhere until y'all follow His word. And this needs to stop, the way our people is being treated. And no one, women my age, out there sitting on Nebraska with nowhere to go. They can't go nowhere in this city. And it's wrong, and it's pitiful. But we don't want, y'all don't want to be in your homes, oh, it's a problem. But we have the problems just being outside in the street like animals. We are human beings, and this God said for it. Cease and desist now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Terry Rock, and I stand here as the mother of a firefighter. I need to know that when he is out doing his job, that he is going to be protected in every way that he can possibly be protected. Not, I don't believe that for the City Council to appoint all the members is in the best interest of the city. So I'm definitely against that. And if so, why would we have a board at all? It just doesn't make any sense to me. I support Mayor Castor, and I don't say that all the time. But in this case, I do support Mayor Castor and look forward to being able to talk about this further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Zendri Smith. I'm Hispanic, and I just want to show my support to law enforcement. I really am concerned that more layers of police oversight will reduce their actions towards enforcement of the law. I would like to make sure that we don't become another Portland. We really need the law enforcement to be able to act upon crime. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
My name is Clay Daniels. I live at 3708 East North Bay, Tampa, Florida. Been there for 35 years. I am 70 years old, and I hate to stay in my home. The noise is so bad. I thought when I retire, be able to enjoy life. I just want to sit here and almost cry. I didn't get no sleep last night, and it's terrible over there. And the City Council members need to help Mr. Goode, because y'all don't know what it's like to live over there. Y'all need to spend more time in each Tampa, see what's going on, to feel it, to live it, to smell it, and see what it's like. Forty-five homicide deaths in a year is not over yet. The loud music is so bad, it's unbearable. I've been coming up here for 30, 25 to 30 years complaining about loud music. I hadn't got anywhere. But when the people downtown start complaining about the music, then y'all want to do something. But we human beings, too. We, I can't live in my home where I pay taxes at. I hate to go home. When you hate to go home, where can you go? The noise is so bad. The cars boom, 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 all night long, they taking over the neighborhood. You can't sleep at night. It is bad. I'm 70 years old and can't enjoy life, me and my family. Don't I deserve that in America? It's like I'm in Vietnam, a foreign country dropping bombs. The whole house shaking, a boom, 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 the windows. And I'm asking, Mr. Bennett, and I'm begging the City Council members, to get the police department to crack down on this noise. You can crack down on this noise. We need some law and order, crack down on this noise. Then when you stop these cars for loud music, you get these guns off the street. Then you get the guns, you get, the crime rate drop. But the 45 homicide cases, it's only happening each Tampa. To y'all, if you fixing a puzzle, and you don't complete the puzzle, it may look good downtown, but each Tampa don't look good. This is where we need to penetrate right now. It's a mess over there. It's a mess. And people's getting paid to do their job, they need to do it. I'm not here to criticize no one. I just want someone to help me. We need help. God knows we do. We got problems over there. All the City Council members need to get with Mr. Goode to take care of this problem. I'm not here to criticize nobody or hurt nobody. The noise problem is bad over there. It goes on all night and all day long. It's like a cocaine addiction, a boom, 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 boom. I lost it in Tallahassee. We lost it by one vote in the Senate to make it a moving violation. We got a mess on our hands. Please help me. I've asked the City Council before, y'all. All they hear was talk and no action. I need some help. Please help. Some of my friends are scared to come up here today. I'm here to speak for them. The senior citizen, tell them, start a petition to try to get help with the loud music. These cars ride all over the city, and all they do is a public nuisance, a boom, 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 all night and all day long. So we asking y'all to get with the chief and the mayor to do something about this problem with the loud music from cars, so people like me can live in our home and die in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Hi, I just want to start off by saying that I think it's so embarrassing that the PBA felt the need to send out a message begging for officers and their family to come to this today and show their support. Clearly, they must be so frightened by the thought of accountability that they are shaking in their boots, and they felt the need to organize in a last-ditch effort to evade transparency. In the message they sent out, it said, and I quote, "You're there to support the PBA fighting against the ACLU who are trying to advance the CRB and want to give them more power over police officers and their discipline." I mean, it's obvious as to why they would fight so hard against this, because it would surely shine a big spotlight on all the egregious acts the Tampa Police Department continues to commit, like how they murdered Dominique Mulkey a month ago for stealing a bag of chips. I just think it's honestly weird how no other profession asks people to support them like the police do by allowing them to do whatever they want to whomever they want with no questions asked. The people of Tampa are pleading for police oversight. Literally, there were over 100 protests this summer for this very reason. And because of it, we want the Citizens Review Board to actually have the power to, you know, review without it being through the agency they are supposed to be reviewing. I mean, come on, it's so blatantly obvious why subpoena power and the ability to conduct independent investigations is necessary. But I'll still break it down for y'all. The police do bad things. Then they cover it up or change information to fit their side in narrative. Thus, a review board with actual power could identify these situations and truly hold them accountable. This is unreasonable to assume the police act in such an unethical way when they literally stand by the idea of back the blue no matter who. That statement alone should be enough to ensure that there's independent oversight, as they do not care about how their colleagues act, just that they share the same sentiments. We're asking for the bare minimum here, and we know that it's legally possible as Broward County was recently granted similar powers for their board. This should be especially alarming that the police are fighting so hard against this, and should be all the more reason to grant these powers to this board. Please do your job, City Council, and represent the city as a whole and what we want, not just this sad minority of people who want to ensure the tyranny of the Tampa Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. And your name for the record?
Madison Rambarak.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Morgan Salcedo. I've been a resident of Tampa my entire life. So I would first like to comment on the fact that this is the third Citizens Review Board meeting that I've been to regarding the same topic, and nothing has been done, no legislation, no programs, no trainings, no action. And with that, the topic of this meeting is, so all of those meetings have finally culminated to this. The topic of this meeting is regarding this opportunity for action to be possible, but the police are very against this idea of granting subpoena power to a board that has no power at all. The board comprised and guided by the ideas and needs of the people, the board that is supposed to hold the police accountable doesn't have any power, which doesn't make any sense. And the police want to keep it that way. This has been seen by their extreme efforts This has been seen by their extreme efforts to be the antithesis of progress and actually push against the will of the people rather than be welcome and accepting and open to it. So that's already suspect. And the rhetoric of the email mentioned prior is, that was trying to mobilize supporters and cronies. It was obviously heavily biased and quite frankly scary as it has been made very clear time and time again that the police have been ingrained with an implicit bias to only protect and serve selectively and selfishly. And what's scarier is their desperate scramble to unify in order to fight off an independent investigative body that would actually benefit the city. An investigative body already exists for the police department, but it's internal and this nullifies any validity or credibility that it may have. And its consistency and accuracy is skewed by the toxic culture of back the blue and supporting the good apples when the good apples are the ones who's, are the ones who continue to watch the bad apples do bad things time and time again and don't hold them accountable. So, yeah, and they don't get held accountable for it. And these officers, it's just been shown, it's literally statistically shown that they have a deeply ingrained bias. We all do. It's just from growing up, like how you grow up. But someone brought up a parallel about how having this independent investigative review board is like having a student run a school for a day, like be the principal. But right now, having police investigate police is like having a student grade another student's test. Like it's just, it's susceptible and vulnerable to so many like externalities. But this is why we need subpoena power for y'all to investigate. But that is it. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Please state your name and you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is KD. First off, I want to say I support implementing the ACLU's demands for a stronger and more transparent citizen review board. Firstly, or secondly, I continue to lose faith in city council who has failed to fund community and has failed continuously to stand up for the black community in Tampa as well as other vulnerable populations. I reject awarding, uh, the rewarding of the Tampa Police Department for any additional grants. I urge you to deny the initial grants from the FDOT for the purpose of overtime wages, additional speed and additional speed trap monitoring. The people need funds for resources, not speed traps. Deny the additional grant from the FDOT. Deny the grant from FEMA. Our city does not need bomb suits, night vision goggles, and not X-ray vision generators. The city of Tampa does not need X-ray, uh, X-ray vision to see the oppression and the marginalization that's happening to our, to our city. Deny the grant from TPD for the Urban Area Security Initiative. This Homeland Security Grant would give TPD access to gadgets and software upgrades, which is not necessary. Again, I firmly call you to reject all of these grants. As stated before, the use of force has increased twenty-four percent since Dugan has been chief and that's only adding to the distrust. The community has called for resources in accessible housing, universal childcare, Tampa jobs programs, and alternatives to responders who do not work with, partner with, or corespond with the police. Again, who do not work with, partner with, or corespond with the police department. We have given options such as Kahoot and yet the city has not acted appropriately. The need is very visible to us because we are here in the community. If you're here in the, in these communities, as you say you are, you understand that these needs and the, and the requests wouldn't fall on deaf ears. You serve us, not the people that line your pockets. These grants only add to the unnecessarily large police budget that has already been increased. A budget is a moral document and a document that outlines, that outlines the needs that you say is necessary. So, before you, before you approve any more of these grants, please ask yourself, does this budget truly align with those you serve and does it align equitably? Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead. Please state your name.
Uh, my name is Zulima Ramos. I'm with the Tampa Bay Housing Justice Committee, a group of over a hundred and fifty dedicated to getting a roof over every head. And I would also like to add, if we could please ask that everyone actually keep their mask on. I've had COVID once and clearly you're gonna fund slavery and not my healthcare and I can't afford to get it again. I already have lung damage, so please. As someone with a bachelor's degree in history and philosophy, I would like to remind everyone here that the Thirteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution abolished slavery and involuntary servitude except as punishment for a crime or really behavior that is criminalized. Slavery is still alive. It has only added razor wire to its plantations and better trained those who enforce it. We need grants for housing, healthcare, public transit, childcare education, and other programs that actually reduce criminalized behavior, not slavery. The Tampa Police Department has openly doxxed a black woman simply for filming when she has been pulled over at gunpoint, which is legal for her to do. The Tampa Police Department intentionally harasses, arrests, and forces bogus charges on activists protesting for black lives and asserting their First Amendment rights. The use of force against civilians under Chief Dugan has increased by twenty-five percent and that can't even qualify the amount of trauma in this community and the amount of mental healthcare that's going to be needed to possibly even start to undo that. Is that the world that we really want to live in in 2020? A world where we give slave catchers, so kindly called officers, money and rights that we do not give to hungry and houseless people? A world where we defend murder and terror just because it is legal and accepted? Is that what freedom looks like to you all? We need counselors, not cops. We, not counselors with cops. The solutions have already been implemented and studied for you and they cost less money and less lives than slavery anyhow. Just ask the Institute for the Development of Human Arts, which provides training and resources for shifting policy and practice in mental healthcare and gathers experts from all over the country who share strategies and successes around eliminating law enforcement from crisis care. Contact Mental Health First Aid Oakland, a mobile crisis response unit that provides assistance and resources and puts callers' needs first. A program like here in Food Not Bombs that is based on a culture of solidarity and mutual aid that already exists in our communities of color because we can't depend on police. We cannot depend on slave catchers for our freedom. We can do better and we have. We will, we the people, will end hunger and poverty without you. Please prove us wrong and join us with your Our City funds that you have non-consensually taken because the blood of Dominique Mulkey, Jonas Joseph, Jason Westcott, Arthur Green Jr., and many others is already on your hands. How many more of us have to be murdered or maimed or caged for you all to take our safety seriously? Please do because my life actually depends on it. I've already survived COVID, but I probably won't survive racism. So please, actually listen to the people who are most affected.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kim Dunmire. I would like to speak out against any additional grant money going to the police courses as well as supporting the additional powers of the Citizen Review Board. As members of this community and additionally as taxpayers that fund the police department, we deserve the ultimate freedom to investigate and to determine what powers these people have above us. The Tampa Police Department has shown continuous violence against black, brown, indigenous members of our community. We cannot allow it to continue. Recently, the unjust murder of Dominique Mulkey, who should have seen his day in court. Additionally, the continued harassment and doxing of those who have spoke out and protested in support of black lives. And the doxing of an individual, of a black woman, was stopped and used her constitutional right to record the interaction with those who had detained her. Additionally, the use of force, as many have said, has increased against citizens and members of our community. There's no reason for this money to go towards slave catchers when we're in the midst of a pandemic. We deserve food. We deserve housing. We deserve public transit. Those who are unhoused in our community continue to be harassed and it must stop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. You can use the other, other podium.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for coming this morning. My name is Christine Quinn. I ran for US Congress here in the fourteenth district. And I just want you all to know that I appreciate you being here and that we have a board to review. I support our police, obviously. I back the blue. My son is a police officer. And I want everyone to understand that he does not wake up every morning and wanting to go down and kill someone or to arrest people. He wakes up every morning wanting to serve and protect our community. Every community must have law and order, just like we have law and order in our homes. We want to keep things and keep the peace in our household. We want to keep the peace in our community. So it's very important that we support our police, not only with more funding, but with better training. And if there's people in our community that do not like the police, we'll have them join them. I like our YMCA programs that bring police officers into the community to meet the children. And at the end of the day, it starts with respect. We need to respect our elders. We need to respect our community and we need to respect our police officers. They wake up every morning, just like we do, get up, get dressed, put on their uniform to go out and serve and protect and keep the peace. They're not out there to disrupt the peace. They're not out there to kill people. They're out there to serve law and abiding citizens. It's those citizens that don't want to live by the law, that go out and break the law, that they have to go out and go after. So this isn't about poverty. This isn't about race. This is about criminals. And our police department is there to protect us from criminals. So I hope that when you're making your decisions, you think about your children, you think about the children in the community, and we need to teach those children to have respect for law and order. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hello, council members. My name is Troy Torino and I was just informed about this meeting about ten o'clock last night. Been a member of this community my whole life. I know the system from the inside and the outside and I stand firmly against reducing funding for our police department in any shape or form. The grants are necessary. The problem that we have here on the streets is reflected clearly as the gentleman that spoke earlier. It's not a color issue. I used to have the same attitude and I was treated the same way as all these other people feel like they're being treated. Whenever we go out in the streets and we act like we hate the police and we act like they're our enemies, we get treated accordingly. They are, they're humans. They're not robots. So everybody, whenever, whenever I act emotionally and I act like I hate the police and I act like the person standing in front of my face is an enemy, I'm gonna get treated accordingly because I'm interacting with a human. I'm not interacting with a machine. And then when he goes and he teaches the young little kids that don't know what they're talking about to do the same thing, it systematically happens over and over. I am firmly against the desire to systematically destroy our country. When you got people sitting out here saying that they're fighting because they want equal rights, yet they're fighting in groups that want dismantle the nuclear family. They want to remove men from the household, so therefore the child has a six times more likely chance of growing up in poverty. Ten times more likely chance of ending up being incarcerated. These, you're counterproductive. These are, these are not, these are not, you are not fighting the right way, being misled by, by the media that you listen to. We, we are in a fight for our country and this is, defunding the police is the last thing that needs to happen. We do not need to take any funding from the police. Training needs to be, needs to be a thing. More, more training needs to be, be enacted and, I mean, our, our country is just so upside down right now and people do not understand the sides that they are fighting from. They are fighting from the sides that are, that are working for their destruction. If any of these, if any of these people wanted to make it better, then all, all these cities, Chicago, Philadelphia, all these places that have been run by these sides for all these times, you would see a little bit. That's systematic racism. Keeping people into a state of poverty where they can scream that, oh, these people on the other side are racist. Everybody wants equality. Everybody wants equality. We do. Whenever I acted the same way and whenever I acted like I hated the police, guess where I ended up?
Mister Chair, Mister Chair, point of order, if, if, if I may, point of order. If we could ask the speaker to address city council.
If you could address the, the board, yeah, no individual in the, in the group.
I, I, I stand firmly against just destroying, destroying. I mean, our, our, our system is not systematically racist. It's not, the police are not. I, every time that I went to jail, my wristband had a W on it for white. And I got the same treatment whenever I acted like I hated the police. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hello, city council. My name is Audra and I'm here to talk about, um...
Pull, pull down the microphone a little.
There? Is that better? Okay. My name is Audra and I'm here to talk about the potential of defunding the police and then creating this, giving more power to an oversight board. That's like creating your own branch of government that you get to wield as you will. That's pretty much wrong, okay? Since we're gonna talk about brown and indigenous people, I'm one of them and I help run Back the Blue Florida. Y'all know who we are. Eighty percent of Back the Blue and its managers are brown and Latino, okay? So to say that cops are racist and people supporting cops are racist is a hundred percent inaccurate, okay? We all know that Chief Dugan is doing a great job, all right? We're not gonna tolerate anybody saying anything differently because it's a lie. It's not an opinion. It's a lie. It can be proven wrong. Chief Dugan has stood in the, 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 um, the gulf between politics and crime and sometimes they're the same thing. You know, you don't get to just say you're not a criminal because you're sitting on that side of the tape, guys. Anything that attacks our police is actively attacking our laws and our security. So you're not actually attacking the cops. You're attacking your own safety. Our laws were written for the just and the unjust and the accused, all right? You need to remember that. And then, you know, I, I think you guys should also know it's the talk on the street, what's going on. And I'm gonna be a little silly since this whole meeting is silly anyway. But let's be honest, why would a council person be pushing to defund the police? Or why would they be pushing to take funding away from them or to give an extra branch of government? Why would they be doing that? Maybe cops made them cry at some point and made them feel little and they don't like that. So they're gonna take their little pen, click it, click, 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 and they're gonna write a new law. Oh, we want an oversight board that has power to jump over the chief's head because when I was little, a cop made me cry. Number two, personal vendetta, right? Or political agenda. I have friends I owe because I'm in a position where I'm at. I'm gonna pat their back. They pat mine. We're gonna create an extra branch of government, right? Sounds good. Maybe it's Freudian. You know what guns symbolize and you're just jealous, right? We can, we can look at all of those or we can just realize what you're doing is bad. You're pushing for a, an arm of government that's not meant to be there, all right? All right, I'm done.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning, city council. My name is Dana Fortson and I'd like to ask you some very simple questions. Have you ever woken up at seven AM in the morning to see a prostitute walking in front of your house, being stopped by a John, and your daughter asking why is she dressed like that at seven AM in the morning? Have you ever sat on your neighbor's front porch and watched a drug deal go down at the house across the street? Have any of you had that happen? Have you ever walked down an alleyway with your dogs and seen a prostitute giving a man, let's shall we say, comfort? Have any of you? I've lived there for eighteen years in North Seminole Heights and I've seen it all. Do not defund the police because they can't handle what's going on in the first place, now can they? And until you've lived where I've lived and you pay the taxes that I pay, you have no right to defund somebody who might, might save that prostitute or might save that John or might save that kid who's trying to perpetuate a crime. Thank you for your consideration. Back the blue.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers at this time here? All right, now we go to the registered speakers that are online. We have twenty-three and that is about an hour or so, plus we have eight recorded messages, calculating three minutes apiece. That'll put us to twelve o'clock. I was going to announce at the beginning of the meeting that we take a lunch break at twelve because we have a very long agenda. We're gonna be here all day anyway. Any objection for a twelve o'clock lunch break? No? All right, hearing none. So after public comment, we will go there. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to begin, I believe Carol Ann Bennett is the first speaker.
Good morning, Chair. Carol, Carol Ann Bennett will not be speaking. The first speaker that we have on the list is gonna be Bo Rabatou. Bo, if you are there, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak. Bo, if you are there, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, can the council hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Bo Robachu and I'm a resident of Tampa. I'm speaking today because I believe in freedom and self-determination. Our country's founders knew that folks could not be free or determine the course of their own lives if they lived under the threat of the capricious whims of tyrants. They understood the needs for checks and balances in order for the people to exercise self-determination. Today in Tampa, there is a small minority group which has virtually no check on its capricious whims. That group is the Tampa Police Department. Therefore, I'm asking the Tampa City Council to restore the balance between the citizens and the police by empowering the civilian review board to conduct meaningful and credible investigations into police misconduct, and subpoena witnesses, footage, documents, and evidence. The civilian review board must have its own attorney in order to eliminate conflicts of interest between the police and the board. The civilian review board must control its own agenda and decide for itself what it believes should be investigated and the city council should appoint all members to this civilian review board. Thank you for consideration and have a great day.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Sheri Backer. Ms. Backer, if you're on the line, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Ms. Backer is on a quasi.
It's what? Oh, okay. So that one, not yet. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be David Roundtree. Mr. Roundtree, if you are there, you have three minutes to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Mr. Roundtree, if you can hear me, go ahead. Mr. Roundtree, if you're on the line, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right, great morning. Yes, okay, so my name is David Roundtree. I'm the owner of What Smells So Good LLC here in Tampa. And I've been invited to speak here through James Shaw Jr., the ACLU, on this issue of the Citizens Review Board. And I had a cousin, Mr. Ali, who was on the first Citizens Review Board, and which was a very diverse board. When I went to read back at the, I guess, requirements to be on the board, it seems a little weird to me how you would require somebody to participate for four years on a voluntary basis and think that you would actually, you know, get some real participation because we live in a, obviously, a compensation society. So if you are requiring somebody to provide some serious oversight, they need to be compensated. And on top of that, out of the 11 members that are present on the board, the discriminating factor is felons can't be on the board. And as a felon, if I just got paperwork in the mail that says that I need to report for jury duty and get paid for jury duty, well, I think this, as a board that has to do with our citizens and reviewing our police, well, then that needs to be reflective of the actual citizens. And even returning citizens as myself if I so choose to volunteer or be compensated to participate in such a board, that needs to be reflective. And to have board members selected by city council or by the mayor themselves, which is how the first board went down, that makes no sense. So if you want more participation, I mean, you all need to change those regulations. And at the end of the day, when I looked at those 17 findings that they have on the website, I mean, I don't see any of that reflective in the community, especially body cams. I don't see any of these officers still riding around or approaching people with body cams. And definitely, when these officers are approaching people with this COVID situation going on, they don't have masks on, they're disrespecting the six-foot social distancing. And they're approaching people, you know, five and six, one individual, which I've seen this all around town, and they holler around them, cutting off their airspace, and they're not practicing any kind of protocol. So it's a lot more issues that need to be going on right now that need to be paid attention to. And we're not talking about defunding. And everybody keep throwing this defunding. We're not talking about defunding the police, we're talking about reform. This whole meeting is about reform. As you need funds to reform. So stop coming up with some defunding. Nobody's talking about ever defunding the police. We're talking about reform. That's what needs to go on. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be David Semenoff. Mr. Semenoff, if you are there, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Great. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right. My name is Dave Semenoff. I live in the city of Tampa. And I just want to say upfront that I've had very few personal interactions with the police, but they've all been great, they've been professional, they've been positive. Now here's what I want to say. I think right now, the way it's set up is that we're saying the only way the Tampa Police Department can do its job well is if it's immune from any responsibility, credible responsibility, for its actions. That is antithetical to the idea of any kind of public service. Let's think about what kind of message that sends. If a professional is unwilling to stand by their actions, that doesn't come from a point of strength or confidence. That means they're scared. That means they're insecure. That means they're cowardly. And I know for a fact that our police department professionals are none of those things. The police should embrace this. No one should be fighting against it. When they agree to be accountable for what they do, they're just confirming their commitment to being credible, to being part of the community, and to not being above the community and thinking of themselves to be above approach, sorry, reproach. There is nothing in this proposal that would lessen the effectiveness of the Tampa Police Department. There is nothing in this proposal that would make it harder for them to do their jobs. There is nothing in this proposal that will increase crime. There is nothing in this proposal that will make Tampa a less safe place to be. And, you know, the scaremongering out there is real and you should ignore it. The fact is that on this entire call, and for the rest of this call, you will hear no, not one single credible, fact-based argument against proposal to increase real, true oversight for members of the Tampa Police Department. So in conclusion, I hope this board makes the right decision, the logical decision, the fair decision, and the decision to give the community true oversight over what its public servants are doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Grant Lovering. Mr. Lovering, if you're on the line, please unmute yourself and you're going to have three minutes to speak.
Sir, if you can hear me, go ahead. Grant Lovering?
Okay, Chair, moving along. The next speaker is going to be Gretchen Cauthren. Ms. Cauthren, if you are there, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. I am Gretchen Cauthren. I'm a native Floridian of Tampa. I'm an attorney and a local forensic scientist. I currently serve on the board of the National Alliance for Mental Illness, the Hillsborough County chapter. And I'm also currently serving as the president of the Greater Tampa American Civil Liberties Union, also known as the ACLU. The ACLU is a nonpartisan organization that defends the Constitution and the Bill of Rights for all people. We currently have four Tampa attorneys, including myself, who have been volunteering our time and our legal expertise to assist the city council and the city of Tampa government for several months now. Our organization was asked to assist in updating the civilian review board so that it will better represent the needs of the citizens of Tampa and also to bring it up to date with citizen review boards around the state and the country. The ACLU is not in favor nor against anyone. We're here to protect the highest law of our country and our state. Florida as a state, we pride ourselves on our government's transparency. We're the Sunshine State. We have the Sunshine Law in place that enables citizens to hold all government agencies accountable for their actions or their inactions. Citizen review boards are not actions against police agencies. They're boards that provide citizens with the transparency that was given to them by the Florida Constitution. They should not be controversial. Our city has had a citizens review board for over five years. The proposals in front of city council now are to add transparency to the process. The proposals do not, do not allow the citizen review board to subpoena officers that are involved in an ongoing investigation. And they do not allow the citizens review board to discipline officers. So I want to make that clear. I know there has been false statements sent out to members of the police union and also on some social media sites. And those statements are incorrect. The proposals do not allow the CRB to subpoena an officer that is being investigated. They also do not allow the CRB to discipline an officer. This should not be an issue of citizens versus police or city council and civil rights organizations against police as the PBA Police Union has suggested in its social media statements and emails. You can support police and support the CRB just as you can support teachers and also support school boards that hold teachers accountable for their work. Several people have commented that oversight of police may cause police to stop doing their job. I want to know how so? Are there any employees in this meeting that have told your boss that if your boss is going to hold you accountable for the work you do, that you are not going to be able to complete your work? That is absolutely ridiculous. Every one of us in this meeting who has a job is held accountable for doing our work. Police should not be excluded from that.
Thank you very much.
I want to ask, what reason?
Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be James Shaw. Mr. Shaw, if you're on the line, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you. James Shaw, I'm one of the attorneys working to help with the upgrade of the citizens review board. Nobody's paying me and it's not my idea of fun either. I'm doing it because it's the right thing to do so this community can have meaningful oversight of the police. I can tell, and I hope the community can tell, that this council is laboring in good faith in what seems to be a sincere desire to keep the community safe, even when one of the things the community needs to be safe from is the abuse of power. And power doesn't like it when anyone suggests that that's something people need to be kept safe from, but it is. You can't give a government agency historically unprecedented powers of surveillance and the power to use lethal force without also having oversight and accountability. You have addressed that community need in good faith, but I have to say that the law enforcement community frankly hasn't. This side of body cameras, there's been no serious reforms, just a series of advisory boards that create the appearance of collaborating with local activists, but they're not listening to any of us. They're posing for pictures with us, maybe asking for input on a minor detail so they can claim that they collaborated with us on some of these ineffectual reforms. But I want to be 100% clear. The draft ordinance that you received a few days ago was not the result of any collaboration with the local ACLU chapter. We were humored at best, but our concerns were ignored. And what you got in the end was the result of lobbying by the PBA at the drafting level. And I have to say that the PBA's approach to this whole process has been nothing short of bizarre. All anyone is requesting for Tampa to do is catch up with other major U.S. cities that already have community oversight of police that's meaningful. But they sent out a communication to their membership saying they're under attack and they need support of the police by opposing oversight and accountability. Letting someone operate in the dark is not support. No one else makes that argument. Doctors don't say, we are heroes, we save lives, and show us how much you love us by not having any oversight over us, by having no procedures for accountability when any of us engage in misconduct. Only law enforcement officers pretend that we need to let them do whatever they want to whomever they want with no meaningful accountability or else we're not supporting them. So come on, you are engaging in this process in good faith like adults, and so are we. And I just want to say that as we all continue working on this, I sure do hope that we can do it without any more hand-handed polls or alarmist calls for misguided support or rumors of make-believe laws or any more obstacles. This community, when it wants to, is capable of coming together to do what was left undone in 2015 by fixing the ordinance and working together in good faith so we can have trust and accountability between the community and the people that we employ to police us. This council's been laboring in good faith to do that. We've been doing that. And I sincerely hope that going forward, the law enforcement community can join us in the good faith participating in this legislative process. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Jamie Clappholz. If you are there, Mr. Jamie, please unmute yourself and you will have three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you very much for taking the time to hear from us. As she said, my name is Jamie Clappholz and I am one of the attorneys in this community volunteering our time to help upgrade the citizens review board ordinance. And the reason that we've devoted so much of our time and energy to this effort is because the community has a social contract with law enforcement that says in order for the police to protect us, we give them authority to use force against civilians and conduct searches and seizures of people and property. And that's an extraordinary amount of authority. And with that, the community should have an external, independent body with authority to independently collect information and conduct reviews of police-related issues. One crucial tool for independent investigations is subpoena power. And this has been framed as an issue about subpoenaing sworn police officers to provide testimony. But we see it as far more important for the CRB to be authorized to issue subpoenas to civilians who may have relevant documents, surveillance footage, or other evidence. And nowadays, with Ring Doorbell cameras and surveillance cameras everywhere, incidents that happen in the public are likely to be caught on video. And so if the Professional Standards Bureau doesn't obtain video footage for whatever reason, the CRB should have the authority to decide that they want to obtain it and review it for themselves. Think about how different that the Rodney King case would have been without video evidence. And we know that the police review boards in Key West, Miami, and most recently, Broward County have the authority to do subpoenas. So it's not a question of law, it's a question of policy. And giving the CRB the tools that it needs to independently collect information is good policy that will enhance the CRB's credibility and the legitimacy in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Jessica McCormick. Ms. McCormick, if you are on the line, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Jessica McCormick and I have lived in Tampa for over 12 years now. And I love this city. Part of loving something is working for it to continually become a better version of itself as time passes. And one of those things that Tampa needs to work on is how the police work in this city. Police are human beings, just like you and me. They aren't infallible. But because they swore to represent and uphold the laws of this city, they need to be held to a higher standard. As a Tampon, I'm not comfortable with leaving the police to effectively investigate themselves when there are wrongdoings. The current status quo is for investigators to have limited oversight by a citizen review board that can't make any suggestions for effective change. And we need change. I think the events of this past summer during the police generated violence against our citizens and the city's lack of effort to curb that behavior from our own police officers speaks to that. The police do not have proper training when it comes to de-escalation and the events in this summer proved it. Our citizens, like a man who spoke earlier, do not feel safe in this city because of how the police regularly comport themselves and protect themselves from oversight and from consequences. I was genuinely proud to be able to vote for Mayor Castor. But now I'm simply discouraged that she has closed ranks with the police and has refused to rethink how the police could and should work in this climate. In order for this city and its police force to move forward, the citizen review board must be able to perform investigations itself and not simply review already closed investigations. In order to accomplish that... In order to accomplish that, the CRB must be able to issue subpoenas for witness testimony and evidence. The CRB must have its own independent attorney who answers only to the CRB. Any other city employee attorneys will have a conflict of interest and be vulnerable to pressure from other agencies. The CRB must be independent of the mayor's office. The mayor should not have the ability to appoint half or even nearly half of the members because the office of the mayor has oversight of the police. Again, the ultimate goal here is for the CRB to be able to act as a truly independent entity to make fair, unbiased determinations. Lastly, the CRB must be able to decide for itself what it should investigate. Currently, Tampa PD only allows the CRB to review what Tampa PD wants it to. The citizen review board should be a truly independent entity that works to fix what's broken and help the city's police force become better, more transparent, and actually answerable for any wrongdoing. The current model perpetuates bad behavior by burying what TPD wants buried. It gives TPD the impression that they are above the citizens they are supposed to serve and protect. If we are to respect the police, they need to respect the people first. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Jordana Yampolsky. Ms. Yampolsky, if you are on the line, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Jordana Yampolsky. I'm with the Tampa Bay branch of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm a lifelong resident of Tampa. I currently reside in Sulphur Springs. As another person mentioned, this is another of multiple city council meetings on the citizen review board and whether it will have subpoena power. The CRB should definitely be an independent entity from the TPD. Transparency is a cornerstone of democracy, and we all know this. And a lot of people here want to talk about public safety, but where are the public safety nets that actually prevent crime? Where have the Boys and Girls Clubs gone? Where are the sidewalks in East Tampa or Town and Country? The police do not prevent crime. They investigate it with guns after it already happened. Where are the shelters for the houseless? Where's public transit? Where's the city-funded food program, especially during a pandemic that the governor thinks is either over or never even existed? Where's the initiative from our public servants? Who are you? You listen to these racist people speak on members of the community that have a different color skin than them or haven't had the same privileges granted to them throughout their lives. But police are supposed to serve every citizen, even ones that may be disobeying a law. Taking a bag of chips from a Dollar General should not be a death sentence. Dominique Mulkey deserves to be alive. Jonas Joseph deserves to be alive. Kai Summers deserves to be alive. I, I'm also talking on, I'm going to demand that you reject these grants from the FDOT and from FEMA and from Homeland Security that are just going to further militarize our police. We need, we need safety. We, we, we don't need police. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Kelly Benjamin. Ms. Benjamin, if you're on the line, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Hello?
Good morning, sir. Go ahead.
All right, it's working. Good morning, Council. I apologize, my, my daughter is in the background, she might interrupt me, but I just want to make a few, you know, quick comments on this ongoing saga for the citizens of Tampa's diverse communities to have a voice and a say in the way our, our communities are, are police. And, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that the, the notion of accountability, you know, for law enforcement seems to be so triggering for so many in, in our community. I'd like to, you know, just take a step back to remind folks why this initial folks and, uh, you know, push for a review board began, and I, and I don't, you know, I don't think this is news to anyone on, on the council, and I really appreciate the hard work being put in by the council to make this ordinance right this time because it, you know, it, it created a board in 2015 through Buckhorn's executive order that did not meet the needs of, of the community. You know, that year in, in 2015 was the year that the US Department of Justice released a report that found that the policies of the Tampa Police Department had a pattern of discriminatory behavior. When it came to bicycle stops, commonly referred to as biking while black, and the report was, was based solely on data from a portion of that year. But these policies have been going on for years prior to that. For quite some time, we know that, you know, the, the year before that, TPD was responsible for the death of Arthur Green Jr. and Jason Westcott. And those are two individuals who should be alive today. The, the notion that a degree of accountability and, and transparency should not be controversial, as, as speakers before me had said. It's, it's very troubling, you know, to think that oversight and the ability to have a say in how we're police and a degree of trust is met, met with such, you know, scorn and, um, and controversy. The mayor's own task force indicated that, you know, we're, we're lacking in trust in, in the city with what's happening with police at this time. And I, you know, I wanted to maybe shine a light on, you know, I, some of you may have seen this poll that the PBA released recently. And it, it had to do with, you know, the, the, the need for the PBA to have an experienced, you know, law enforcement officer on the board. Only 17% of the recipients of, of that poll, the participants in that poll were African-American. But it, it also, it was worded in a way that it didn't, it, it didn't state the need for that, this board. And the, the need for this board is transparency, and it's a civilian oversight board. To have former law enforcement officers sit on this board, it would be a violation of the public trust. I appreciate so much the council has put in to making this ordinance right. And, and, you know, it's a sign that it was continued today so we can, you know, work on the issues that we're, you know, we, we still have some disagreement over, including investigatory power, setting its own agenda, and, and the ability to have subpoena power. And, you know, as, as so many have said previously, this is not about disciplining officers. This is about creating a better relationship for our community. You know, somebody who's a, a fifth-generation Tampa native who's raising a daughter in this city, I really think that this is, this is the time to get this right. I, I appreciate everyone's hard work on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Maj Vasai. Maj, if you're on the line, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. In my 13 years as a criminal defense attorney, a member of the Hillsborough County Diversity Advisory Board, and as someone who has himself been unlawfully arrested by the TPD for having a bad attitude, I have realized that police officers are just like any of us. They aren't robots. They're normal people, just like us, who are just trying to do their job with pride like anybody else who wears a uniform to work. They have good days and they have bad days. And just like us, they deserve the highest praise and respect and admiration by our community for risking their lives every day to do a difficult job in the field. It requires split-second decisions without a supervisor, prosecutor, or judge looking over their shoulder to advise. And just like us regular civilians, they also make mistakes. There are heroes, and there are bad apples in their profession, too. While you shouldn't judge an entire profession by its few bad apples, there ought to be some professions where there are no bad apples. Pilots, surgeons, judges, prosecutors, and yes, cops, too. Police officers are civil servants. As such, they should be held accountable. The definition of insanity is repeating the same act and expecting different results. The status quo has failed us. Now, the public resistance to a stronger review board is being logically framed by officers and some of the speakers here today as being, quote, disrespectful or attacking police. This is a reckless, unhelpful, emotional, dare I say, snowflake argument. Because a stronger citizens review board is a pro-police measure. Good cops should want accountability. Police unions have resisted every single effort at accountability throughout history. Look at the fight they put up against body-worn cameras for years under the false premise of, quote, attacking police. We are here today not because police have gotten worse, but because those body-worn cameras and cellphone cameras have begun to capture the record in real time rather than an officer's carefully curated written report created after the fact. Cops often say to suspects, "If you have nothing to hide, just cooperate with us and we'll let you go." So my message to police is this. Just cooperate with the citizens review board, and if you have nothing to hide, they will let you go. The CRB should be an independent, it should be independent of the mayor's office. It should have an independent council whose fiduciary obligation is to the board itself because city attorneys clearly have an inherent conflict of interest. The CRB also needs to decide for itself what to investigate and not take whatever it's sent from TPD. Therefore, this means subpoena power. I'll leave you with a quote. "Too often we judge other groups by their worst examples, and we judge ourselves by our best intentions." That's from George W. Bush. "We owe it to our community to make changes. Those in power cannot continue to judge themselves by their best intentions. The status quo has failed us." Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Matthew Lompowski. Matthew, if you're on the line, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, um, so, um, first of all, thanks for allowing us to, uh, give public comment on this. I'd like to say that, um, it's, it screams paranoia when the police union sends out a, a blast email to former police officers and current officers to flood the convention center to oppose the citizens review board and giving them more power over police officers and their discipline, which is what they say. So i- it screams paranoia, but I must add, so this, these changes of the citizens review board would in no way affect any sort of discipline on the police department. The only thing the police department is afraid of here is transparency and the optics of a public, uh, public system sho- showing their misconduct out in the public square. So, you know, the, uh, I, I, I want to say it like this. So the Tampa Police Union's, um, uh, excuse me, the, the union, sorry. Okay, so, the thing is, the citizens review board having its own subpoena power in no way allows them to discipline the police department because the Law Enforcement Bill of Rights prevents any sort of discipline. So that's, that's going to my point, that all they are afraid of is the transparency of it all. They don't want their misconduct in the public square. So that, that's, you know, you, another talk, another commenter said that you won't hear any fact-based or evidence-based comments on the other side of this argument because there is no fact-based or evidence-based argument to make. You're only hearing stats from this side of the argument. So as to, um, I, I'd like to add to that. So, you know, you guys say, "Well, how are we going to pay for this stuff? How are we going to pay for this stuff? Let's get these grants for military equipment." These grants are only giving us equipment to fight a war on drugs that we've been failing since 1971. Okay? And the police department has $174 million at the, at their disposal. And meanwhile, they, they're, you know, so let me, let me be a little anecdotal. So the police department currently has a homeless outreach department, okay? That's headed by one police officer. Do you guys know what the total budget for that department is? It's $0. It's $0. Meanwhile, the bike, the bike cops chase the houseless folks away from the parks at 5:30 in the morning, a rude awakening every single morning, you know? So the money is there to take care of people in the city, but you guys refuse to do it, okay? So again, once again, I'll add, to Mr. Citro personally, I still haven't had a response from Mr. Citro or his aide regarding his comments saying that the homeless, the houseless crisis in Tampa is not a Tampa problem. It is a county, Hillsborough County problem. So I know we're supposed to direct, directly question the board, not individual councilmen, but Mr. Citro, I'd love for you to take this opportunity to come clean because you guys haven't returned any of my phone calls. Tim, your aide clearly said, and I quote, "The house, houseless problem in Tampa isn't a Tampa problem."
Thank you. Please address, uh, city council as a board, not as individual members. I'm sure individual members would be happy to meet or call or sit down and discuss. Thank you very much. Next, uh, speaker, please?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Russell Meyer. Russell, if you're on the line, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Reverend Meyer?
Thank you, uh, city council members and chair. It's a pleasure and an honor to be with you again today, and I appreciate the work and dedication that you give, and particularly the long work you've done on this particular issue. Tampa is poised to lead Florida in a new policing narrative, and we all need this. Today in Florida, youth get shot first and then investigated later because of the color of their skin. Our policies must make this impossible. A healthy CRB contributes to us getting it right. Residents want to support a fair and accountable police department. We know the long history of policing in the country, the county, and the city has been about controlling Black and Brown lives. In the 1800s, it was warring against Seminoles, holding Africans hostage, chasing runaway slaves. In the 1900s, it was enforcing Black codes, Jim Crow, and segregation, lynching Black men and women who challenged their dehumanization in the social order. After the civil rights era, it has still been about questioning people for why they are in certain neighborhoods, stopping them while they're walking, driving, or riding bikes, even if they are elected public officials, considering them suspect because of the color of their skin and where they happen to be, using overwhelming and deadly force first and asking questions afterwards. We need a new police narrative, one that protects young Black and Latinx people wherever they are in the city, one that sees them as the promise and future of Tampa, one that ends the school-to-prison pipeline. A fully independent CRB is essential for both holding bad actors accountable and helping to create the narrative we all must want to see about the way police and community interact and relate to one another. The CRB needs to control its own investigations for it to have the respect of the community. Otherwise, it will be seen as a whitewash by the mayor's office, which simply continues the old narrative. This means the CRB must, one, be able to choose what it investigates and reviews; two, have its own attorney and staff, independent of any other official government interest; three, have its members appointed equally by city council members and the mayor's office and the community, because public safety is a partnership that includes all of us; and four, have subpoena powers for witnesses and evidence that otherwise wouldn't be considered. Dear council members, and yes, even Mayor Castor, you have the opportunity to lead Florida in what policing to protect all peoples looks like. You can define public safety for the 21st century. I urge you to create a truly community-respected and respecting CRB. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Sean Brown. Sean, if you're on the line, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown, if you can hear me, you have three minutes to speak.
There we go. Finally unmuted myself. Sorry about that. Thank you, council. I, I signed up to speak of, on item, agenda item number 75 as it concerns the, uh, the eight, um, proposals that were made in the Growth Management Workshop. And so, you know, my reiteration on those, it was, one of them was made was to, um, you know, put a suspension on the Tampa Comprehensive Plan until, uh, you know, further studies and review can be, can occur, that will fix, uh, quite a bit of the policy discrepancies within there. And so I know this item has been moved to the meeting in December, but I just wanted to stay on the line and, and just kind of reiterate that point in that we're hoping that some sort of moratorium or suspension of the Comprehensive Plan occurs before further development, further developers come before this council and then, you know, get their, uh, proposals in and essentially become grandfathered in after the fact, you know, before, uh, meaningful changes can be made. So, um, that is the only comments I'm going to make today in regards to that. And, uh, you know, I will definitely have more. and, uh, you know, I will definitely have more later on, um, at the next meeting. So thank you, council, for listening. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you very much. Next, uh, speaker, please.
The Chair, the next speaker is going to be Susan Smith. Susan, if you're on the line, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
I think I'm unmuted. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Council members, thank you for allowing me to comment today on reform of the Citizen Review Board. I'll be brief and speak from a more global perspective this morning. It seems to me that law enforcement agencies around the United States have two big problems. First is the few bad apples mentioned by previous speakers who are killing black people without justification. And second is the lack of trust which is resulting from the cover-up of these killings. Unfortunately, because it happens so frequently, most recently, we could see it for ourselves in a disturbing video released in Brevard County. This distrust of law enforcement is spreading beyond the neighborhoods where these deadly acts are occurring and into every community throughout our country. I think this was evident from the diversity of protesters we saw in the streets last summer. This distrust cannot be contained. If you want to restore faith in police forces, one of the most effective steps you can take is to guarantee full transparency and accountability. For that reason, a strong, independent, and fair Citizen Review Board with subpoena power and the ability to investigate open cases should be welcomed by lawmakers as well as law enforcers. I urge you to listen to the citizens who call for reform, listen to the ACLU. We will all benefit from improving trust, not further eroding it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Tiffany Hilton. Tiffany, if you're on the line, you have three minutes to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, first of all, good morning. My name's Tiffany Hilton. I'm a Tampa native and a second-year law student at Stetson University College of Law. I'm not interested in defunding the police. I want to say that upfront. What I'm interested in is the rehabilitation of the reputation of police among citizens. The Citizens Review Board is a step in the right direction to enhancing the trust between TPD and the community it serves, but it's toothless in its current iteration. In its current form, the CRB is only permitted to review closed investigations already conducted by TPD themselves. The CRB needs to perform their own investigations and needs to have subpoena power for witness testimony and evidence, not over police officers like the PBA is falsely claiming. The only attorneys for the CRB currently are city employee attorneys, which creates an inherent conflict of interest. Not only are these attorneys subject to pressure from their own employers, they're subject to pressure from other agencies. The CRB needs to have its own attorney so that they may act independently in accordance with the City of Tampa Code of Ethics and the Florida Bars Rules of Professional Conduct which prohibits attorneys from entering into an arrangement that would cause undue influence. The CRB itself needs to be fully independent of influence. The mayor of Tampa should not appoint CRB members. That would be a clear conflict of interest because the mayor has oversight over the police as well. The last point I would make is that the CRB is only able to review what TPD allows them to review, which is in direct conflict with its mission to provide police oversight to enhance trust. The CRB needs to be able to decide for itself what it wants to investigate. Otherwise, TPD and the City of Tampa is just paying lip service to its citizens' pleas for accountability and oversight. We never ask for money for military-grade tactical gear to be used against citizens we'll come from. We should be asking why the police are worried about being independently reviewed. If you aren't doing anything illegal, you have nothing to worry about, right? In today's social and political climate, a Citizens Review Board would go a long way to deal with the tension that citizens, law enforcement officers, and our elected officials are experiencing.
Hold on a second, uh, what's going on?
What is that?
There's other audio coming in, but let's see if they can stop it.
You can learn more at tampa.gov.net/pipes. But that's just the beginning. We've also passed the first budget of my administration.
Stay with us one minute.
First budget that started in the blacks since the Great Recession. This budget focused on securing Tampa's financial future while investing in our infrastructure to ensure that our children's children inherit a city where they too can thrive. And because we know small businesses are the backbone of our community, we launched Bridges to Business where we brought city government to you by working with small minority businesses to ensure they have the ability to become a certified vendor with the city. Our Intersections to Innovation Program recently launched too, connecting our local tech community with city staff to discuss and pitch ways our emerging entrepreneurs can create real solutions to projects and problems facing our city. In Tampa, art has always been used to tell our story. So our administration worked with our neighborhoods to launch Art on the Block. Tampa's neighborhoods are our most important asset and this program recognizes, highlights, and celebrates the residents' characteristics and stories unique to these communities. Remember, at the City of Tampa, we're here to serve you. If you have any suggestions, questions, or just need assistance, please go to tampa.gov.net customer service or call 813-274-8211.
I hope that's the end of it.
Hi, this is Mayor Jane Castor. Thank you for calling the City of Tampa. Here at the city, we're committed to transforming Tampa tomorrow.
Yeah, can we get rid of this whole news?
A city where entrepreneurs come to thrive.
Someone whose lives, uh, is on, that's on hold here. All right. Someone put their phone on hold.
In Best Metro here.
Is it possible just to dump the call that's on hold?
It's, it's difficult to do that because they're not recognized if they call in only. Yeah, they did not log into the webinar and they only called in. We have no control over it. So it's the staff member that needs to...
Could you, could you talk into the microphone? I'd like to hear what you're saying. I'm sorry.
I was stating that if the staff member called in only and did not log on, we have no access to them and cannot mute them, so they would...
Can all staff just get off for the time being?
Yes, if they called in only, they need to just hang up.
All right, if there's any staff on the line that called in and is on hold here, please disconnect from the call for a few minutes, uh, so we can finish this public comment. I'm getting all sorts of texts. The mayor's really determined to, to spread the word here on Public Works. All right. Is it, is it over?
It sounds like it.
Okay, Ms., Ms. Hilton, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we apologize for that. Today's been one of those days.
Crazier things happen to me on a daily basis, right?
We paused your time, so you'll, you'll have your full time. If you'd like to go ahead, we'll start, restart the clock there.
No, no problem. I'll just finish up what I was saying. Um, I was saying, in today's social and political climate, a real Citizens Review Board would go a long way in easing some of the tensions that, uh, citizens, law enforcement officers, and our elected officials are experiencing. In its current form, the CRB does nothing to provide authentic oversight and only serves to palliate the frustration in our community. Uh, with some changes, the CRB can do much more. It can completely cure these frustrations by creating harmony between TPD and the real-life people who, at the end of the day, share the common goal that the CRB's mission statement purports to support. It falls short of that goal, but it doesn't have to. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we apologize for that interruption.
That's okay.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Chair, uh, would you like to go back to Grant Lovering?
Okay, if Grant Lovering is on the line, go ahead.
Hey, good morning, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great. So, yeah, first off, I'd just like to say that, um, I hope, uh, the council and all the Back the Blue folks can listen more to the ACLU and all the activists who are demanding some oversight from the Community Review Board. And obviously, the police do not need any more money to further militarize. Um, it's been mentioned a couple times that, uh, there are no logical arguments on the other side. It's all just fear-based emotion. So for certain council members that aren't able to listen to the logic uh, because they're getting scared, no one's trying to take away anybody's house or car. We're just trying to make sure you don't get extra ones, you know? Um, and that folks that basic, whose basic needs aren't being met, uh, their basic needs will be met. So, thank you for your time and, uh, I, actually, the reason I didn't speak before is because another activist, Justin Coffey, never received his leak, um, but he signed in using mine. So if you're able to get him to speak, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Alexa Rotberg. Alexa, if you're on the line, you have three minutes to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hey, councilman, my name's Alexia Rotberg. I live in District Four in South Tampa. Um, to be honest, I really wanted to type up one of my dramatic three-minute speeches um, to get my point across. However, I just really didn't have the energy anymore to say it constructively or eloquently. Um, the only thing I really would like to say is I urge everybody to look at this issue objectively. As hard as that may be given the political climate surrounding police and community relationships right now, objectively, it is not normal for a regulatory body or even a public safety body such as the Tampa Police Department to resist oversight by independent oversight committees. That is a red flag to democracy. And it doesn't really matter what side of the table you're on. It's just very questionable. And I encourage everybody to dig a little deeper and ask, why is TPD and the PBA and the mayor so hesitant to open up the conversation to other people? It's, it's a huge red flag. It's very scary to me as a citizen. And that's all I can really say without regretting anything. So thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Chair, that completes public comment.
Okay, that completes the people that have registered or the public, the speakers that are registered online. We have a gentleman in the audience, Mr. Dixon. He's here for Item Sixty-Nine. Um, he was here at the time for, uh, uh, public comment when we had folks in the room. Uh, if the gentleman would like to speak, you have three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning to each of you. Uh, I am Reverend Willie G. Dixon. I'm an eighty-nine-year-old resident of the City of Tampa and I worked with, uh, the City of Tampa Housing for, for over twenty-five years. And what I want to do today is to thank you for taking a bold stand at your last meeting to make a resolution for reparation. And today, you will go down in history because you will hear more about Agenda Item Sixty-Nine. We have people from all over the United States that is supporting our issue. And I would like to make a comment, uh, from the mayor. She says, uh, "We need to learn from these things that happened in the past." And here, some of you might be familiar with the Take It to the Heights. If you look at this chart, it would speak for itself that the Coach Foundation owned properties within that area. And, and yesterday, I did give you a file with all of the evidence. And one other thing I would like to say is this. You're doing something bold, but what I want to say is you have a meeting, uh, this afternoon. And I would like to say that this meeting would be one-sided. Under the Sixth Amendment of the United States, I have an opportunity to be able to, to confront the person that is going to make a report. And also, if you, if you go back and search Porter versus Texas, the United States Supreme Court said I have a right to confront anyone that will contradict what I say. So with that being said, I want you to know that nothing was done in the dark. Here is a picture showing over seventy, since nineteen seventy, they have been planning to take the property from black folks. I used to live in this area and now it's time for you to make reparation for what is done. Not only reparation, but compensation that has not been paid to our organization. At the age of sixty-nine, I want to leave a record to know that I did what I was supposed to do to bring this thing to the public. And this should be in the archives because you, you're trying to discover things that hidden graves and, and people's been dead and there's no history. But in your archives, you will have a history of what has been done to black folks here in Tampa. They didn't do it in Ebro City. They didn't do it in West Tampa, but they destroyed a black community. And as the mayor says, we cannot change history, but you can learn from history and you can compensate for what you didn't do. Now, reparation is something that's going on all over America. And this will be a blueprint for others to follow here in Tampa. And I know, uh, my friend, uh, uh, he doesn't, he doesn't like me to call him Mr. Miranda, just call him Charlie, but, uh, he is familiar with Take It to the Heights. And this is what we are talking about. We would like to receive what is due to our organization. And I thank you for your time and may you be blessed.
Thank you very much. And we have one more? Yes, sir. You have three minutes to speak and that'll conclude the, the public comment in person and then we'll go to the recorded messages. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Life Malcolm. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the Coach Foundation. Reverend Willie Dixon, uh, just explained how this plan to take over black community, houses in the black community unfolded, uh, over the past fifty years, almost fifty years. Uh, what people will see if they watch the City Council meeting, uh, and get to Item Number Sixty-Nine, even if you read the agenda, uh, you'll see that the city tries to back out of the deal, this administration tries to back out of a deal a previous administration made with Coach, Coach Foundation by saying, one, the statute of limitations ran, uh, uh, on Reverend Dixon and Coach's claim, and two, that, uh, the city was not a party to the deal. You might not understand the deal, though. Uh, it's the same old make-a-treaty-break-a-treaty trick that governments for a very long time have used to take land and property from people who were colonized by colonized nations. Uh, what the city did, the City of Tampa did, was, uh, loan Coach Foundation some money. Give Coach, Coach Foundation some money, right? Say, go out and acquire poor people's houses, letting them know that, uh, you know, they'll have an opportunity to come back, we're going to revitalize and redevelop, et cetera, and then sell us back the property for ten dollars and then, uh, we'll have some lender, uh, give us the first mortgage and then we'll split some money with you. But now the city wants to say, oh, uh, we weren't a party to the deal when, uh, the contract was drawn up in an attempt to escape, uh, privety to this contract. So, uh, you, you might not, uh, understand the, the, the whole deal when you read Item Number Sixty-Nine, but that's the general breakdown. Uh, the city took Tampa Heights from black people using nonprofit organizations like Coach. Fernando Noriega Junior lays the plan out in, uh, the Take It to the Heights booklet Reverend Dixon, uh, showed several times, uh, during his presentation. And this picture that you see over here on, uh, the easel shows very clearly that right now, uh, Coach, the land that Coach used to own is occupied by the Pearl Apartments and that value, uh, there is something in this, you know, something like sixty-four million dollars. Uh, the city, this City Council owes Coach Foundation and the black community some money or some land or both. And Reverend Dixon is right, reparations are due. You should do the right thing. Um, the last thing I would say, I can't, I sat here for a long time and listened to this stuff about this Community Review Board and this oversight thing. I would say to, uh, the citizens that if, uh, if this City Council doesn't make sure that the, the Citizens Review Board has teeth and power, then the citizens ourselves should seize that power, sue the city. U.S., uh, forty-two U.S., nineteen eighty-three... U.S., forty-two U.S. nineteen-eighty-three claims, sue the city. Sue the city. And then you can subpoena the information you want. Sue the city. And then you can investigate a current action that's, or complaint you have against the city. Sue them. And if they don't want to give you the power, take it yourselves. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. That concludes the public comment. Here and registered speakers, we have eight recorded messages to play. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to begin.
Mr. Chair, yes, sir. Councilman Viera. If I may, just very quick, because this is for time, so I don't want to take too much darned time, but I was talking to our councilman, Mr. Shelby, on this. I know we have our acting fire chief here who's waiting on item number sixty-eight. I didn't know if we could hear the items or hear the messages on which we need to vote prior to lunch. Mr. Shelby, I don't know what you were indicating to me, sir?
Yeah, if I can just ask the clerk.
Just really quick, because it's time.
You said there were only eight items total?
Eight recorded messages total?
Correct.
But you can't determine which are related to things, let's say, on the consent docket versus things that have already been continued?
No, because they're only say that message, one through eight.
Okay. Counsel, one of the things you can do, because I don't believe, unless counsel, are you planning on making? There's nothing, that's an information report, basically, what you're asking for.
For sixty-eight, I will be making some motions from that with the consent of the chair. But, I mean, we can hear them, obviously. I just wanted just to make everyone aware that we have our acting fire chief here and I wouldn't want them to have to wait another hour and a half or what have you.
If it's counsel's pleasure, if there's not going to be, none of those messages will relate to the subject matter. That's my understanding. So if counsel wants to make the accommodation to the acting fire chief and to Councilman Viera, you certainly can. Otherwise, I don't want to hold this thing up. You could hear the messages. But I'm just telling you with regards to the items on the consent docket, we have to be sure that those are final action by the city council. We should have the opportunity for public comment before you vote on those. So it's your pleasure.
And if I may, just really quickly, maybe the messages are fifteen minutes and this is much ado about nothing, but I would just respectfully request that the fire item sixty-eight be heard prior to lunch, regardless of what we do with those messages. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up after the recorded messages, that we go to the item sixty-eight and get it done before lunch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Which means we may go to lunch at twelve-thirty, whatever it is, but I understand. The messages could be quick. Let's just listen to those, get them out of the way, and then we'll go to item sixty-eight.
Yes, Chair, here's the first recorded message.
Thank you.
Hey, it's James. This is a little disorder of this militia for students in Tampa. I am on the November ninth city council meeting. This has always been a lot of issues and it's time that you continue fighting for progress. As you claim, there are not that many we never have to really have great. Here that makes sense. Listen, the Tampa Police Department lost the trust. Never have the trust. Black ground, it is being clear in the black community. We have a lot of people have this trust, especially the blacks. Everything that's happening. You have the top troops with the ability to empower the city through the budget. Amazing universal health, commonly tightened their temperature levels, the poverty. Instead, you didn't have that and think. A council member, he's totally, probably, well, you know, going to be responsible. It was cahoots, not co-respons. So after, we're pushing for that. It's not difficult. It's more power because it's urgent. Not according to the, you're allegedly to hold us accountable. Won't be what we're supposed to do, but yet there are enough accounts. There, of course, you know, you are not, right? You're, you want you to. Anyone has that thought, we don't need more state tracks over. We don't need any more of them. X-ray vision generators reject the two-hundred-and-ninety-four health dollars. You don't actually see oppression and radicalization happen. You can deal with your plan and keep going. Reject the program from the humanitarian security. That's opposed of combating terrorism, human security, the terrorism and the way the police engage. Or black, disabled, trans, gay, and helpless communities in the city. That is the terror. So, you can, um, homeland security, the city, we told you how you could fix that. You have to watch. Yes, the others that just want to say the ACLU demand on some, or just the support. That's the move you can do. But don't stop that. This was young, not three, six, ten years ago. When the people demanded, you know, and you take on the assistance, you put policing on that. You need to achieve student, wanting to do this. Who's afraid to admit that this is a municipal department, up until they leave. He went even address, subjecting, being the force against the people, gone up twenty-four percent due to in chief. All adding to the trust, the wire, the program, the program, the grant. This is coming in the first stages to oppress and reach those grants. Stop beating, grow, our police department. And stop, right, and city truly do what needs to do to end oppression. That is not one of the things we think has ever been oppression and we just, we just, we just, we just grant. The force of the word, pray.
Chair, here's the next message.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Kivo. I'm in the full tent. He's getting an app from Tampa Florida. I'm calling about funding, especially for this department. Someone I can see at the city council, you know, to fund community programs. It's not standing up for that community in Tampa or for our population. Sounds like they also consider, um, a community, a, a, a grant for the police department. I think it's we, you're responsible to continue to give the police department more. Considering the work individuals and murders, but it's a reason. I think there's any need to fund grants that, you know, related to these things, like terrorism, you know? There are grants from, it could be, obviously, that has been formed until, which has been going on in Tampa. And, um, the most protestant, um, nothing else, we're not, we're not, which is not violent, anything. Most, it looks like some people in the city have, um, traffic, the time, but no one's talked or heard of the result of that. At least not as a result of the actual, because of the cell. So, you know, the community have a test, a protestor. So I think it's appropriate of the, of the, of the police department to complain. Um, but essentially, you know, the response to police violence, this is people in the community trying to be heard and trying to make it clear that people are being executed for things like stealing, you know, food from a dollar store. This is completely unacceptable. And if anything, we need to be putting money into community programs like cahoots and others that actually help to support individuals in the community. We need to make sure that people have food, that we have services for people who have mental health issues. Cracking down on individuals and giving more and more money to, you know, the police department is not going to solve any of these issues and it's not going to reduce crime. That's clearly true, right? So I think we need to be putting money into something else. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Elizabeth Brooks and I live in downtown Tampa. My comment is to address the eleven-nineteen city council nine a.m. meeting. I continue to lose faith in the city council, who has not funded the community and has consistently failed to stand up for the people of color and the most marginalized. I am a resident of Tampa and I reject awarding the Tampa Police Department with any additional grants, be it S-STOP grants and FEMA. This is a new day. The police need assistance and a different mindset to focus on human dignity as they protect and serve the community. I am calling at the city council to do the right thing. We do not need a police state. We need resources to be allocated to fighting poverty, homelessness, universal childcare, racism, and the jobs program. We need to empower our community, not build the distrust. As a resident of Tampa, I ask you to reject all of these grants and continue to reject them until the trust of the most vulnerable and marginalized residents in Tampa are truly served. I also support implementing the ACLU's demands for a stronger and more transparent citizen review board, which is the least you all can do, but clearly that is not enough. But I thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sophia Sabrina. I live in Sulfur Springs. I'm calling about item seventy-one. I'm asking again that the CRB be granted subpoena power and an independent investigator and attorney. This is the first step towards holding the police department accountable when it makes a reckless mistake. This is the first step towards showing the more skeptical citizens of Tampa that you're willing to be transparent. And this is the first step towards establishing that community trust that you guys keep spending more money on, establishing sports leagues and rich houses. We still just want accountability. It is time to give the CRB the authority to make effective change for the people and to give them subpoena power and an independent investigator and attorney. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Erdasia Floyd. I'm a separate resident and I live at forty-nine oh-two North McDill Avenue, apartment twenty-one twenty-two, Tampa Florida, fifty-six one-four. And I'm calling in just to let the council know that I am continuing to lose faith in them because they have not funded the community and have continued to fail consistently to stand up for the black community in Tampa as well as other vulnerable populations. I want to read the words of Councilmember Bill Carlson, who advised that as before, a bunch of people show up and say something like, "You are a bunch of idiots who don't care about poor people and civil rights, et cetera. It won't help us get the votes we need." Well, Councilmember Bill Carlson and the rest of the council, you are a bunch of idiots who don't care about poor people and civil rights. And if that truth hurts you, then the truth hurts. I, as a Tampa resident, reject awarding the Tampa Police Department with any additional grants. I am calling on the city council to do the right thing and deny the several grants that are slated to be discussed today. I firmly call you to reject all of these grants and continue to reject them until the Tampa Police Department gains the trust of the most vulnerable and marginalized residents in Tampa and community control is developed. The community clearly has called for resources and accessible housing, and the university's childcare, and the Tampa jobs program, and alternative responders who do not work with, partner with the police. And the city has yet to act appropriately. I am utterly appalled by Councilmember Bill Carlson's words. And it just lets me know that you are all so disconnected from the reality of what we're up against, what black people and what other vulnerable people in this country, in the city, are up against. You all do not have the backbone, the knowledge, the skill, the stamina to do what needs to be done to get my people free. And that will continue to be true, Councilmember Bill Carlson. No matter how many emails you send or how many groups you try to meet with, you do not have stamina, the backbone, the knowledge, the skill to even begin to represent me and give me the freedom that my people need. You need to sit and think on that. For real, really, take my word seriously, because you haven't. That's all I wanted to say. I want Councilmember Bill Carlson to seriously think about his words and the rest of you to seriously think about how you are actually getting black people and other vulnerable populations in the city free, because you're not what you're doing.
Good morning. My name is Mary Elizabeth Estrada. I live in the Seminole Heights area. I'm calling to ask city council to reject the large grants from FEMA and Homeland Security. I believe that we should start working on ensuring that we actually prevent crime by making sure communities have all of their basic needs met. Dominique Mulkey did not have his basic needs met. And he is an example of what I mean by, we need to ensure that everyone in Tampa has basic needs like food, water, shelter, mental or substance rehabilitation, medical care. These things are all necessary to prevent crime and prevent death. Please consider not accepting the large grants from FEMA and Homeland Security. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hi, I'm Angel Jimenez. I live in the Seminole Heights area of Tampa. And I'm calling about, to address some proposals for the city council meeting at nine a.m. on November nineteenth. I continue to lose faith in city council, who has not funded the community despite the many community members asking for funding for affordable housing, universal childcare, a jobs program, and alternative responders who do not work with, partner with, or co respond with the police. And yet, our calls have been fallen on closed ears. So I'm asking that you reject all four grants for, that the police department is asking for. Use of force has increased twenty-four percent since Dugan has been chief. And this is unacceptable. As a resident and community member, I call on you to do the right, do the right thing, fund the community and not the police. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Samantha Shepherd. I live in the Seminole Heights area and I'm calling about the nine o'clock a.m. city council meeting on November nineteenth. So first off, before I even go into anything, I would like to communicate to the members of city council that their job is to represent the interests of more than just police officers and the police union. Under no circumstances should Tampa Police Department be awarded approximately three-point-six million dollars in grant money. Use of force has increased twenty-four percent since Dugan has been the chief. Tampa Police Department executed Dominique Mulkey on October twentieth last month. And the police murder and harass Tampa citizens, especially if they are black and mentally ill. The community doesn't want these people to have even more resources to do the things that they've been doing. And also, the citizens' review board should, under no circumstances, be continued to be appointed by Mayor Jane Castor, who is a former cop. And her bias, along with anyone else associated with Tampa Police Department, has no place in the citizens' review board process. As it stands now, having TPD control basically everything the citizens' review board does completely defeats the entire purpose of a citizens' review board. And it's very telling that TPD is so threatened by independent oversight and accountability. The citizens' review board should be able to choose the cases they investigate and have subpoena power in order to actively, or to actually handle police misconduct and brutality. And history has shown us time and time again that the default for police is misconduct and brutality. So my main point here is I really want to be very clear and communicate to Tampa city council that their job is to represent not the very tiny percentage of the community who is Tampa Police Department, but the entire community. Thanks. Bye.
Chair, that concludes the recorded public comments.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for today. We'll go to item number sixty-eight. Councilman Viera, go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for that. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the accommodation, Mr. Chair, and your leadership. I wanted to talk very briefly before we have speakers come up on item number sixty-eight to talk about my rationale and why I brought this item forward, why I think it's so important, not just to my district, but to all of the city of Tampa. I made this request about a year ago for the city of Tampa to prepare a master plan for all of public safety. That includes police, that includes fire, et cetera. You know, I saw, and obviously I support this, that we're doing a master plan for parks and recreation, as we should, because all parts of the city should have, you know, equitable access to parks and recreation. But we should also do that for public safety, given the many, many deficits that we have. Kind of what led me to do this was what I call the patchwork of diverse requests that would come up, particularly for Tampa Fire Rescue. We saw our friend, Councilman Goots, who is always such an aggressive advocate for his district, request a new rescue vehicle for station number sixteen with the help of Tampa firefighters. Soon thereafter, I requested, with the help of Tampa firefighters, a new vehicle for station thirteen, which I'll be talking about. My idea is that instead of being reactive, we should be proactive. Proactive through a universal, comprehensive plan that talks about all of our public safety needs so that we can know where those deficits are and how to build the financial bridge to rep- we can know where those deficits are and how to build a financial bridge to repair and address those deficits. I'll be talking about, just briefly, some statistics, but, but I want to make clear, when it's come to these issues, I believe that we have had a partner in, in, number one, this City Council, a very pro-public safety City Council, and certainly in the administration, an administration that knows a thing or two about being a first responder. Right here, obviously, we have Chief John Bennett, who served with TPD for many years. So when I cite these challenges, for me, I'm calling for a collaborative approach, which I believe will happen, which I believe will happen. I'll be making a motion on certain issues. This sort of got bigger, I guess, if you will, in the last month. I, I always visit a lot of fire stations and police stations within the city of Tampa, and I always ask the men and women there, I give them my information, and I go, "Anything that, that's up, here's my cell number, give me a call." Well, recently, the men and women over at Fire Station Thirteen, which services the North Tampa area, that's Sulfur Springs, Bush Boulevard, Fowler, Forest Hills, University Community Areas I'll talk about, reached out to me, and, and they said, "Louis, we need your help. You know, we, we've helped out Fire Station Thirteen through the new vehicle. This year, in our City of Tampa budget, which we passed not too long ago, we included design money for a new fire station for North Tampa, but my message is, we need help right here, right now," which is why I wanted to speak with such urgency on this. The statistics that I'll talk, that I'll be talking about, demand relief, they demand action, they demand immediate action on the part of the city of Tampa, which I, which I'm very confident, again, through that collaborative process that we'll get to. But they also demand, I think, a resolution in all of our parts to never let this happen again. The statistics that I'm going to be talking about, in particular with Fire Station Thirteen and other parts of the city of Tampa, for me, are very, very troubling for, for the reasons that I'll talk about. We need relief right here, right now. Fire Station Thirteen, which, again, services the North Tampa area, is clearly the busiest station in the city of Tampa by far and away. It's kind of funny, I'll tell you all something funny, a firefighter told me, when I was there on Tuesday, talking to some of them, I said, "Do y'all mind if I, you know, said that y'all talked to me?" And they said, "What's the worst thing they could do to me? Send me to Station Thirteen?" You know, kind of as a joke. In other words, people know that Station Thirteen is a very, very challenging station. I think we all know that. We've been making progress towards that, but my message is, we need a lot more right here, right now. If you take a look at the statistics in two thousand nineteen, Station Thirteen responded to, it appears, eleven thousand calls for service. That's one out of twenty-three stations, but one in seven calls citywide came from the range of Station Thirteen. One out of twenty-three, but one out of seven calls. Take a look at that disparity. Then you have the National Run Survey in two thousand nineteen from Firehouse Magazine, which, again, these statistics are startling. You know, the city of Tampa, we like to be in those top fifty, top one hundred lists, but this is a dubious list that we want to get off of as soon as possible, whenever it comes to Station Thirteen. In two thousand nineteen, according to this survey, and again, this is across the United States of America, from Utah to California to Mississippi to Nebraska, all the way down here to Florida. In two thousand nineteen, Station Thirteen had fifty-three hundred runs, making it the twentieth busiest station in the United States of America, according to this survey. In two thousand nineteen, it was the fifty-fourth busiest ladder in the United States of America. Engine thirteen was the busiest engine company with about ten thousand seven hundred responses from June first, two thousand and eighteen to May thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, according to a study given to me from the International Association of Firefighters. Engine eleven is the second busiest with eight thousand responses during that time. Think about that. The gap between number one, which is Station Thirteen, and number two, which is what, Engine eleven, is about twenty-five percent, twenty-five or thirty percent. If it was a five or ten percent gap, you, you could deal with that. Twenty-five to thirty percent gap, that gap is startling. Truck thirteen had the busiest track unit in this time, from June of two thousand and seventeen to the end of May two thousand and nineteen, with forty-six hundred responses. And Rescue Thirteen at this time was, again, the busiest rescue with about eighty-one hundred responses. Those statistics require not just the long-term plan, which is what the Public Safety Master Plan is about, which, again, goes to police as well as fire, right? But it demands immediate responses. What are the side effects of this? You have stress surrounding units. As I'll talk about, units near Station Thirteen that have got to make up for the deficit that Station Thirteen has. You talk to the men and women out there at Thirteen, they have some nights where they get a call for a fire at midnight, and then six, five, six, seven more calls that evening. That's unacceptable. I think we all agree on that clearly. And again, that's why it's going to be a collaborative approach. Take a look at the surrounding area that Station Thirteen serves. This is an area, and Councilman Gudes and I share that area, we know that very, very well, that has a lot of working families, that has a lot of blue-collar, working-class families, that has a lot of working poor, men and women who work forty hours a week at difficult jobs and still live in poverty. That's the community that Station Thirteen serves. According to the study by the International Association of Firefighters from two thousand and fourteen to eighteen, the highest percentage of poverty, when you measure the communities that Fire Station serves within the city of Tampa, Station Thirteen had among the highest, as well as the areas for three and eighteen. The largest area overall for that poverty was the University of South Florida area, just north of Station Thirteen. About one in four, roughly, or one in four of the city of Tampa's children live in poverty. These are areas off of Bush, off of Nebraska, where that number is more doubled. These are the families that Station Thirteen serves. Again, what does this mean? This means deficits for the North Tampa area, these affected families, these working families. This means waiting time deficits throughout the city. Something that I want to address, and I'll talk about a motion time, is response times for the city of Tampa. You take a look at, according to the International Association of Firefighters study, the six stations with the longest waiting time, out of six, three, three, six, four, seven, New Tampa occupies four out of those six. Again, right near where Station Thirteen is. We have many, many older stations that need repair, and again, an unbalanced distribution of sources, of resources. About one in seven, like I said, of total incidents, and one in four of unit responses occur in Station Thirteen's first alarm zone. With regards to the total unit response, thirteen occupies almost one in four, or about twenty-three percent of that. Again, very, very disproportionate, obviously. The next highest is Station Eight, which has thirteen percent of the share. Again, about a ten-point gap. That's a disparity that, that I think is very, very shocking, and it's talking about shifting burdens. The other side effects of this are, we're a city with growing needs. In the last ten years, our city has grown by about twenty percent. And, and like I always say, when our city grows, when we get more money from tax revenue, we have to take care of the basic needs of our citizens, which includes public safety. Another issue that I've talked to the men and women at Thirteen and throughout the city of Tampa about, which is the emotional trauma that our firefighters and our EMS personnel deal with. And again, I, I'm certainly not going to give a lecture on that. I'm not a first responder, et cetera, but, but, these kinds of challenges increase the emotional trauma that our first responders have to deal with out of Thirteen and throughout our city of Tampa. That's an issue that we certainly ought to look at. So, Mr. Chair, whenever the time comes, I'm going to be making a motion on a couple of issues. First, I, I want to motion, again, I'm not making the motion now, just to put it out there, where I, I want to have a couple of things. Number one, an immediate plan of action for immediate relief for Station Thirteen. We've done things over the last year, which are great things, a new vehicle, starting the dialogue and design for a new Fire Station Twenty-four to have, to happen out there in the North Tampa area. I want something that these men and women can look to for immediate relief now, whether it's a new engine, whatever. I'm not a, a, a fire professional, so I'm going to leave that to professionals. So therefore, I'm going to be making a motion that we meet the administration, Mr. Greco, myself, and other council members who want, may want to be involved in separate meetings, to have a plan of action for Station Thirteen presented within the next thirty to forty-five days, so that we get a plan for relief right here and right now for Station Thirteen. I also want a longer-term plan. We could do ninety days, a hundred and twenty days, whatever it may be, to look at inquiries for new stations, not just in the North and New Tampa area, but a channel side, something, again, I'm not going to speak extensively on that, that's our good friend Councilman Gudes' district. Another, and I know Mr. Greco's going to be speaking on that, another area that needs a fire station. I want to have a long-term plan that looks at the needs for these fire stations, as well as for addressing response times within the New Tampa area, and, most importantly, to have a financial bridge on how to get there. These things are not free, they're going to cost money. I want the city to have a discussion, right, on how are we going to find the money? I think we all agree that these are basic needs that require prompt and immediate action, right? And the issue is, how do we pay for them? I want to have a discussion for that. I want to have a discussion on that. And again, I know that right now, some of our fire stations are watching. I know that Fire Station Twenty-three, unless if they're called out for something, is watching. Fire Station Thirteen, unless if they're called out for something, is watching. The men and women of Tampa Fire Rescue, as well as the, the residents that they serve are watching us, and I know that in, in working with the administration that puts public safety first, and with the City Council that puts public safety first, we're going to do the right thing. But those are the motions I'll be making at the end, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Councilman Viera, and I look forward to supporting you on those motions when they come up. Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to say the same thing you just said. I look forward to supporting this motion, and, and I want to make sure that this council understands that a lot of the money that we've used from community investment tax, you have one more bite at it, and it'll be in twenty, twenty-six it ends. So that means that what you're talking about, the expansion of the city and growth, and the amount of vehicles that we have to supply, not only to the fire and police, but other necessities in the community that we do public service with, will end. So you have to look at that amount of money, and I'm sure the good Chief Bennett is deputy, is looking at the cost of what we have to do in the future. This is years away, but when you plan for years away, you haven't done right. So this council's responsibility going forward is to make sure that the money that are needed to replace vehicles, fire engines, ambulances, and other vehicles are going to cost an enormous amount of money, because at the year twenty twenty-seven forward, there is no more community investment tax, and that's in the millions of dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gudes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, thank you for your leadership today. It's been a long day, and again, we cherish your leadership. I want to thank the Tampa Fire Union for providing me this book, this pamphlet here. I read it extensively. It was a lot of insight, and again, when you talk about those, those numbers of those stations, Mr. Viera, you can look at, and look at what's actually in those stations from the sheet. When I first came on council, I talked about fire rescue, I talked about public safety, I talked about downtown, I talked about channel side. We have water here, we have a growing downtown, a growing channel side district, but a lot of high-rise buildings. We're behind the times. You look at other cities, when new developers coming into those areas, those cities usually work a deal out with those developers to try to get those houses underneath those, those buildings. I think that's something that we need to look at in the future, too. If we're going to be giving a lot of incentives, which we do at times, to a lot of these developers, we need to look at getting with those developers when those new high-rises are being built or plans are being developed in those early stages, to see how we can partner with them to maybe put a fire station in those, those areas, and it may cost the city a little less money by cooperating and being a good partner. I think that's a key factor. Again, someone who has been a public safety provider and understands public safety, when someone needs help, those, people might think those few minutes, but those few minutes to people seem like hours and decades. A person who's given CPR, a person who's dealt on scenes, waiting for a rescue truck to get here, and you call on that radio, saying, "Radio, where, where's that ten thirty-two at? Where's it at?" I understand what time is, and time is, that's why I fought so hard about, in East Tampa, when I talked about Station Ten, which is one of the oldest stations, the number-two station in the city, if I'm not, if my memory is correctly, which is dilapidated. You can't house even a rescue unit in there, only a, a truck. But again, I, I'm supportive of Mr. Viera's motion, as I know Thirteen is very busy. You know, it serves North Tampa, which me and Mr. Viera share North Tampa, so that thing goes back and forth, plus you've got a lot of amusement parks and other big attractions up in that area. So again, I'm supportive of the Fire Department. I know they have needs, and again, I don't think citizens would, would, would mind or be upset about us going forward to try to find some ideas, because, again, when your family is hurting or someone is hurt, trust me, they're saying, "Where's the ambulance? Where's the ambulance?" And again, we don't want to be a city to put our residents in that situation. We're doing the best we can with what we have, but I know we can do better, and sometimes we just have to ask our citizens, I consider just that we just need your help a little bit more to get where we need to go. So I'm supportive of both those motions, and, Mr. Viera, if you bring those to the table, because I know the need of public safety as regards to, especially medical, especially of fire.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gudes. We have some members from the Firefighters Union. We have our acting chief, who wishes to speak, Mr. Captain Greco. And we have Andrew Carter, who I've known for twenty years. We went to high school together, so, good people. I'll vouch for it.
Just as long as you weren't smoking in the boys' room.
Or, excuse me, good afternoon. My name is Joe Greco, and I'm the president of Tampa Firefighters Local Seven Five Four. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity today, and I appreciate Councilman Viera's request back a year ago to provide some information to the, to the council in regards to statistics about Tampa Fire Rescue and where we're at currently. I provided each of you with a copy of the book that Councilman Gudes handed out. It said geographic, geographical information, emergency services capabilities. Councilman Viera requested that from the city back then, too, directly to Chief, at the time, Chief LaCicero. And I, my, my presentation today has changed in light of the, yesterday's events, but I'm going to read through what I had planned to read, minus the, the other stuff. Today, I'd like to provide you with some valuable information that will assist you when making decisions about the needs in the budget for public safety. Tampa Fire Rescue has twenty-four stations. However, two of them are designated as contracted stations to TIA and Mcgill Air First Base and do not respond outside those boundaries. That being said, twenty-two stations respond to an ever-growing call for service, approximately eighty to ninety thousand calls per year. Our city is growing at a rate of about two percent a year, and today's population is around four hundred thousand. The city of Tampa is a hundred and fourteen square miles and sixty-two square miles of water, which we patrol, we have fireboats and we patrol those waters. The reason that's important is because some of the cities that have our same population have a much, much denser city, so the response times, which Councilman Viera referred to, those response times can be handled a lot better because their cities are much tightly, more tightly compact and have more stations in it. And I'll get to that in a minute, a little bit more in a minute. Response times. Recently, an audit of Tampa Fire Rescue was done by, by the City of Tampa, in which it was found that we are not meeting our response time goals. And there are a couple of reasons for, for this. Let me share just a few. First, we're all lazy fire rescue personnel, and we don't get to the truck on time. I'll assure you that's not the case. If that was the case, it would be, have to have happened at all twenty-four of our stations in order to make our response times slow. If we were a one-station department, that could be possible, but that's not the case. Secondly, we have, we don't have enough units to respond to the calls volume that we're come, that we're taking in. That might be likely. We have a poor communication that extends our initial response times. It's been over five years since any unit in the City of Tampa Fire Department has any techni, has had, has had any computer-aided device in it to guide us to where the call is. We're using a map book that was last updated in two thousand and twelve. So similar to when your mom and dad used to go on a vacation, and they would get a trip tick, and you had a little map book and with boxes in it, that's what we're doing on our fire trucks and our ambulances. Everyone should know their first-alarm territory, but we don't respond in just our first-alarm territories. Because we're so busy, such as in Station Thirteen's area, the surrounding units, such as Station Eighteen, Station Eleven, Station Seven, and just about anybody else that they can get in to go to Station Thirteen's area to run a call, they do. Because we're short of units, and we have an overwhelming amount of calls that we respond to in multiple zones in the territories that we're far less familiar with, a need for a dispatch system is of utmost importance. In the new budget, there are monies allocated for a station in New Tampa area. That station should be placed in Station Thirteen's area in the northern corridor. Twenty-five percent of 25% of all calls for 911 service in the City of Tampa, or in the northern corridor, are in Station 13's first alarm territory. Let me re- let me re-say that. 25% of all calls for service in the City of Tampa are in Station 13, one station, first alarm territory. We have one engine, one truck, and now two rescues running 25. They try to, they, they don't get all 25%, because Station 11, Station 18, and Station 7 have to run calls in there, too. But they, what's really crazy is, is that there, the other stations run just as many calls in Station 13's area as Station 13 runs in their own area. That's how many calls are in Station 13's area. It's called Nightmare on Annie, just so you know. A rescue was placed in this area a year ago, and it's making a small dent in the overwhelming call load, and has cut response times in Station 13's area by a small ma- by a small amount. The reason why this will make the response times, so the reason why this, putting a new station up there would make response times better is that the surrounding stations that respond in that, responding to that area will no longer have to respond as much, and that will cut down on those long responses from those other territories into Station 13's area. The city should also look at possibly, and this would be, uh, upon the new fire chief and her staff, look at reducing and increasing sizes of, uh, redistricting, of course, looking at first response territories and either shrinking or enlarging certain response zones to, to give other people, uh, other, other stations more responsibility, and some stations less responsibility. Lastly, a new station needs to be built in the Water District. In 2006, and I provided each of you with a City of Tampa document that was done in June of 2006, it's a strategic plan for the Water District. If you'll turn to page 3.2.7, it states, "City staff, along with consultant, met with fire department staff and said, at a minimum, an EMS facility would be required, given the 20,000 people who will eventually work and live within the area." Now, remember, that's in 2006, this strategic plan was done, and I spoke to a gentleman yesterday that says the CRA is currently going through, doing a new plan now for the Water District. That one is the only one I can find, and it's from 2006, 14 years ago. Long before any ground was broken, it said that it needed an EMS station in the, in the Water District. Now, and I'll move forward. Additionally, it states that the purchase of a new, with the purchase of our new fireboat, which was way back then, they would be looking for, uh, a berth in the district to protect the port. An estimated $5 million in that book that I gave you was the estimated, uh, expense that whoever was on that council at the time estimated that it was going to cost to put that fire station down there. I would like you also to look at 3.4.3, institutional actions, the magnitude, scale, and immediate need for some of this infrastructure improvements, make their completion a high priority. I would like to think that public safety, and I know that this board does, and our staff does, but we're talking about, back in 2006, what they were thinking. I would like to think that public safety was part of that statement about high priority on that board and on this one. I am not sure if the City of Tampa worked with the Port Authority, or if they worked with the developer in the area, but I am sure that the Water District is nearing completion, and there is no fire station yet built there. Yet, everything else in that strategic plan has almost been accomplished. And if you haven't drove through that area, you should. It's amazing down there. It's a little city amongst itself. And there, the, uh, currently, fire rescue operations in the Water District are being covered by one station, Station 1 Downtown. Let me put that into perspective for you. All of downtown and Harbor Island is protected by Station 1, first alarm. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't get other fire trucks to come into the city, but first alarm territory is all of downtown and Harbor Island. Now, they're going to be expected, Station 1, the way it's, we're currently positioned with no fire station in an area, uh, like Channel Side, for Station 1 to take the responsibility of all of that area also now. Their current first alarm territory is all of downtown, Harbor Island, and now Water District. This is insane to only have one engine, one truck company, and one rescue company for a territory this large, with this many target hazards. If you'll turn to page 3 dash 13 and scan down onto a bullet point in the five-year goal, you'll see that a fire station was to be completed in the five-year goal. That would've put it somewhere around 2011, in about five years from the breaking ground of the Channel District, but we would've been prepared. After speaking to a friend of mine last night, he said we only had, uh, about 50 residents in 2000 in the Channel District. Just a few years later, we had 500. Now, we have 5,000, and shortly, we'll have another 23,000. We'll put it somewhere around 30,000 residents in a 50-acre area, high target hazard, all those buildings down there are high target, uh, high target hazards. And we have no fire protection, other than Station 1, who protects all of downtown and Harbor Island in that area. Also, in now, what is being called Midtown, apartments and commercial retail and office space are being built. There seems to be construction everywhere in our city. Yet, there's no call for infrastructure to support its growth. I've been here as a city employee 25 years. We haven't built a station in the city proper since 1989, other than in New Annex Tampa. The last station that was built, numbered station, wasn't even a new number. It was when the airport used to have two stations, and they shut one down and brought it off onto Hillsborough Avenue. They put it then too close to the road, and years later, when Hillsborough Avenue was widened, they have to move, they had to move it back onto the property. But every station we own in this city has been in effect since 1989, other than tearing down old stations and building back a new, but not a new numbered station since 1989, and the station was 12 on Hillsborough Avenue. It's time to catch up with the infrastructure and provide life-saving ser- life-saving services to the citizens of this great city. In summary, I'll request that coun- I'm requesting that council put into motion a plan to build two new fire stations, one in the northern corridor and one in the Water District. These two stations will cut response times and provide much-needed service to these areas, also provide relief to the units and employees that work in those areas. Councilman Viera, you made a motion, I believe, in October of 2019, for us to provide a strategic plan to council, and I've done that. Documents that I have, that I've spoke, the things that I've said today, I have every document. If you, if you'd like, whatever you need from me, I'll be happy to provide to you. That book that I provided to you, it lays out everything. It makes, it will build out the entire city to a four-minute response time, in whatever timeframe you and the city staff decide to do that. But right now, we have to make, play some catch-up, because when Water District goes live, and all those bodies are in all those residences down there, and all that 9 million square feet of office and retail are full of business, full of people in there, we're gonna have quite a few more calls in that area. I promise you. It is time to hold the administration accountable and stop kicking the can. I don't blame this council, nor do I blame any other council, or this administration, or the last. It's time that we get to work, get this thing done, and start putting this, putting this fire department back as a priority. And this city's growing, and we're one of the only growing cities like we're growing. It's time we get on the ball and start putting this thing back to, back on the rails here. I'd like to thank the council for get, for getting the support that you give us, Tampa firefighters. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Goode, then Councilman Carlson, then Councilman Citro.
I, I guess what I'm disappointed is, is that as a policeman, if I get a call, and with the technology we have, I can see where that call is on a screen, it can tell me where it go. So you're telling me that the fire trucks and rescue trucks are working off our old, old map, uh, to get where we need to go, and not the new technology and a, and a truck?
So over five years ago, they took our, uh, computers off our trucks and said that it would be a year, and we would have another, another type of, uh, computer in our vehicles. We currently have no technology, none. My cellphone is the technology that we have, and I'd, I'd like to also then just go back just a second and tell you that the City of Tampa staff has recognized that issue. Remember, that's a new staff at the City of Tampa, Chief Bennett and our, our wonderful Mayor Jane Castor. Along with y'all, you didn't know, uh, but Chief Bennett found a way recently to purchase 60 iPads. They're still not on our units, but we haven't had a computer in our trucks, other than our cellphones, for over five years, Councilman.
That's unacceptable.
Yes, sir, it is.
With the technology we have, you know, if I go, something go down, they can go get me a computer and this and that. I don't know if it's because of the software, whatever, but, yeah.
My seven-year-old carries around a laptop.
Chief Bennett on staff, who, who I know recognized the importance of getting to a call. I mean, that's unacceptable. That's just unacceptable. If my mother's dying, I have two six-parent, you guys have been in my parents' house, and you can't find someone's house, or you gotta work on, on, on your cellphones? That's unacceptable.
It's a good city policy to be on your cellphone inside a city vehicle.
I know it is, and I'm glad Chief Bennett recognized that, and is working on that now. That's unacceptable, and I'm glad he's working on that.
He's, he's, he's already worked on it, and we're gonna get it f- fixed real soon.
Well, thank you, Chief Bennett, for doing that, because that's very important, because I know how it is when you, you're, your parents are sick, or someone's down on the ground, someone's been shot, and you're wondering, and where are they at, where they at? We can't find you. I know how that situation feels when I didn't have that kind of technology, and a new road came up, something happened, and I can't find to get to that call, and people are asking service. That's a problem for me, and I'm glad Chief is fixing that problem.
Yes, sir.
The second thing I wanna talk about is that, I talked about it earlier when I first came aboard, about, uh, the, these, these channel districts downtown, the water not having services, and you're getting multiple of people that are coming with the growth. We do have a CRA. I don't know if the administration has, have approached our CRA, or referenced that, anything or not, but I think that's another avenue as well. Uh, the folks on that CRA board are very, very forward-thinking people. Uh, they have a lot of developers on that board, too, and I, I don't think they would have a problem trying to work something out with some new development that's going on to put a station down there. I mean, that should be a priority as well, along with Mr. Viera's concern with 13, because again, if you're saying Station Number 1's all the way up the Twix Street up there, and we gotta get down to Channel in the District, and you've got a major fire, I've been there, and you're talking about 14 and 15 guys working a fire, and with a downtown fire, with a high-rise, you're gonna need way more guys, and maybe 14 guys, to work a fire.
Try getting through there when the lightning are playing.
I understand it. So, again, I, 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 I know you have a, 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 a chief of staff who understands public safety, who understands about getting to a call.
He absolutely does. I appreciate every time I talk to him.
You know, my friend's father was a police officer in Ocala for many years, and he would say, "When seconds count, police are minutes away." And it applies to this. I mean, without the technology that you need, where every second counts, you can't be wasting. Well, where do we go? You need to get there right away, because, you know, it's a life and death situation. So ab- absolutely, and I'm glad Chief Bennett was able to, uh, allocate the funding for the, uh, for the iPads. There's no excuse for that. Councilman Carlson, then Councilman Citro.
Thank you for your, thank you for your, um, commitment, hard work on this.
Yes, sir.
And dedication of, um, public safety. When we first met a couple of years ago, you talked to me about, you and your colleagues talked to me about the fact that the, uh, the fire trucks are only, um, supposed to last five years, and some of their 15 or 20 years old. I didn't hear you say that just now, but did you include fire trucks?
It's not five years, sir. It's 10 years on a, on a fire engine, and it's 15 years on a truck, which are the ones that have the ladders on top. Then they have a rest, then they have a reserve life. So because of, I'll give you, I'll just use Station 13 as an example. Because of that, that, the service life that it has in its, in its, um, in its, when it's new, depending on what type of maintenance it has done, service history, mileage, there's a bunch of categories that going to making it either, either going to into reserve status or staying in frontline status. Station 13's truck will never make, it, and it's one of, it's one of the City of Tampa's largest expenses, Charlie Miranda. Uh, that asset is a massive asset that, that the City of Tampa should be getting at least 20 years out of. But because of, and Station 13's truck is one of the new ones, but we're running the wheels off of it like it's an F-250 to medical calls, because that area is just so busy, we only have one engine to run it in.
So I, I just got this a few minutes ago, and I flipped through it quickly, but it, most of it looks like infrastructure. Did you include, uh, vehicles in here also, or what?
Maybe, I just, I, I did provide Chief Bennett just with maintenance records on our, on our vehicles, up-to-date ma- maintenance hi- history, like mileage and hours and stuff?
For like new stations and new service and replacement, is there, is there like another, this is like $50 million, is there another big budget for vehicles also, or?
Sir, um, what you're looking at is a, is a plan. It doesn't have to be a, a call to action today. That's to build out the city over, over a timeframe which, with, with, uh, staff and council. That, once that, what's in that book is built out, this city, it, it, it won't ever go outside of those boundaries. So that's a four-minute response time, east, north to south, east to west, in any, in any district, in any first alarm territory, you'll have a four-minute response. It calls for 17 stations. That's not what's requested. That's to build out the entire city for a four-minute response time. We're not talking about that, though. We're looking at areas currently that are in need of service that are not, that, that we don't have enough service in. We don't have enough provider, uh, we don't have enough firefighters, enough engine companies to provide service in those areas.
I think it's important to know what the vision is and what the long-term plan is, and so that's why I appreciate you being so thorough with this. Um, we don't have time today, but if there, if there are other things that we need to look at, like the vehicles, or training, or whatever.
Oh.
It would love to have you all come back. Um, and you could brief us each individually, but to, for anyone who watches this and is interested, I think it would be good to, to make sure the public understands, too, what the needs are.
So we do have a plan to replace vehicles. Uh, years ago, we had a regular vehicle replacement plan, but I believe probably back when there was a recession in '07 or '08, um, that replacement plan that we had that was always replacing a certain amount of vehicles, that plan went away, and we, we do the best we can as a city, I believe, as a, as a, uh, council and as a staff, to replace vehicles as we find the money to. Like I said, I, I gave him a vehicle maintenance record. We have first-line engines on this job that have 279,000 miles on them. Some of those vehicles aren't getting serviced as much as they need to be, because we can't take them out of service, because we have to have them running calls. So we do the best we can, as firefighters, and as staff members on the fire department. Uh, I believe they do the best they can to get done with what we, what we're given, you know, what we have to do. We get it done as good as we can. Um, and we're, um, you know, that's about it. So there is, there is a plan, just so you know, um, Councilman Carlson.
Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Again, thank the brave men, uh, women and men of, uh, Fire Rescue for keeping us safe in the City of Tampa, to stay on the same vein as, as the maintenance of the, uh, of the vehicles. Station 9 is the maintenance repair for vehicles in the City of Tampa?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it be more advantageous, what are the texts called, CBRs?
Uh, EVTs.
EVTs, thank you very much.
Emergency Vehicle Technicians.
There you go. Wouldn't it be more advantageous to have one or two more spread out within, within our, our, our district?
Are you talking about maintenance facilities?
I'm talking about maintenance technicians.
No, that's how, it's not really in my lane, but I believe Chief Bennett, when he speaks, he'll, 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 um, provide you some information, uh, that he recently provided.
Instead of taking a vehicle and taking it from, say, 13 all the way down to Station 9 to get repaired, wouldn't it be more advantageous to keep that vehicle within the station?
Well, I, I, as much as I appreciate your, your comment, uh, it won't, it can't work like that, because they, they need massive lifts to lift these, um, very heavy fire trucks up to provide brake service and transmission services and stuff like that. So it actually has to be at a facility. They don't just run out to the fire station. Now, if we need a battery or a tire change, because we have a nail in it, they will come to our station. We don't go out of service for things like that. We have a planned maintenance schedule that we try to follow as best we have, and I know that staff does their best at the fire department to make sure that happens. But we're busy. We're a busy city. We run calls. When we're not running call, running calls in our first alarm territory, because we're out of service, somebody else is running their calls and our calls. So we try not to go out of service just to, you know, any time. Uh, you know, of course, chief officers are involved when you go out of service, you have to let them know, dispatch has to know, your, your next closest station, you always wanna notify them, because they're gonna be running your calls while you're out of service, and you wanna let them know when you come back in service, uh, into, into that area, so they can move back to their area, you know, so.
To, to Councilman Goode's point, and, and yes, Channel Side and downtown needs another, uh, uh, station. To Councilman Goode's point, and yes, Channel Side and downtown needs another station, we are starting to get limited on places in which we can, can put fire stations or can build.
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it be better for the City of Tampa to multitask and put a fire station below, say, a parking garage and/or below other governmental buildings? So, we can start multitasking. Take two stories, one for the vehicles on the first story, and one to house personnel and gyms and what else on the second story, while keeping our men and women safe within the fire departments. Can we start thinking about that?
Yes, sir. What I believe is, is that with our, with our new mayor and our new Chief of Staff and with this council, I believe that's not in my lane, and I believe that somehow they'll figure that out. Firefighters will go wherever you tell us to go, and we'll run calls wherever you tell us to run calls. But when we don't have enough units to run the calls that are coming in, and we're not slowing down by any means, we're only bringing more people into this city. Is this thing working? Is it working? At some point, there's going to be a break where there's not enough, and we just can't do it no more.
I understand.
And I believe that y'all understand it. Councilman, definitely Councilman Vera, Councilman Goode, Councilman Citro, I've spoke to you on multiple occasions, I know that I've spoke to Chairman Mount Scalko. I believe y'all all understand that at some point, there's a break, and at that point, we're so far behind. Remember, to staff a new station, you have to have enough people to promote, and you have to hire enough people that, once you promote, that you backfill where those people came from. It'll, it's very difficult to get that many people through the system, so that you have those, we're behind the times on putting new FTEs in place, so that we have enough people to run enough rescue cars and enough engines and enough truck companies, that even if we built ten stations, we couldn't staff them. It's a slow process, but we have to start the process. We haven't built a new numbered station in the city proper since nineteen eighty-nine.
Mr. Chair, in closing, people, when I was on the campaign trail, when we were on the campaign trail, people were asking the basic necessities. Give fresh, clean drinking water, take away their waste, and keep them safe. This city is growing faster than we have ever expected, and if we cannot give the basic necessities of keeping the people safe with police and fire, then we're doing a disservice. I will be proud to support Councilman Vera's motions.
Thank you very much. I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not trying to open a can of worms, and this would be to the Chief of Staff or anybody else. I'm looking at our agenda under the Public Safety Committee, and there's a lot of grants going to the Police Department, and I see them for safe motorcycle and rider techniques, or speed reduction for safe roadways. Is there any way legally that we accept that money, but we allocate it to the fire department, because it is public safety and police and fire work hand in hand? Or is the stipulation of receiving that grant money only to be dedicated to the Police Department? I don't know if that's, I think it's a valid question, but it is a lot of money. It's over a million dollars when you add it up. If anyone has the, if Chief Bennett, you have the answer, or if anybody?
I definitely don't have that answer.
The can, the can has been opened, the worms are out.
Let's try that.
Yep.
John Bennett, Chief of Staff. First, you know, I just want to say that I appreciate the passion of all the stakeholders, and specifically the tone of collaboration to move this forward. You know, we do have an administration that tremendously supports public safety for the very reasons that all of council have expressed, but specifically Councilman Vera and Councilman Citro's comments about basic services. And I have a lot more to say, but I want to answer the chairman's question. I believe, again, without the CFO and the grants leadership in front of me, that the stipulations applied for and said grant need to be used for that specific item or that specific purpose. Mayor Castor, in this budget, proved by council recently, has expanded the grants office, and I've been in discussion with the fire department about expertise that reside in, I'm very familiar with the SAFER grant process, I've used it before. We need to expand our public safety grants opportunities. I believe that we gave an itemization of the grant expansion in the budget presentation of how voluminous we're looking for financial opportunities and responsibilities to support infrastructure and the growing needs of the city. But, again, specifically to answer your question, I do not believe that we can shift money once we accept in a grant, because the scope of that grant was prescriptive to that opportunity.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much. Chief, does the fire department have a grant writer specifically for the fire department that knows the inside and the outside, and may even be a firefighter themselves that knows how to request grants for the fire department? Do we have a specific grant writer for that department?
I would have to defer that to the fire department. I'm not aware of a current dedicated grant writer with the fire subject matter expertise, which then, like most departments, defaults to the grants office for general services.
Do, Mr. Greco, does the fire department, hang on, does the fire department have a specific grant writer that is either a firefighter, retired firefighter, that knows the ins and outs, and knows how to explain what the grants are for? Are we relying on a citywide grant writer?
We had a fire department grant writer, and he was very good. In fact, over an eighteen-month period, he garnered over seven million dollars in grants, including the largest SAFES grant, SAFER grant, I believe that we've ever been awarded. So, those are what we hire our new employees with, and I believe it pays cheap for five years of their salaries.
The word there was "had."
We had one.
Do we no longer have one?
We can have one. We can have one, and that's something that I believe the staff and along with our new fire chief are going to be working on.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, council. I'll be brief, I know we're up against a break. Andrew Carter, Vice President, Tampa Firefighters, Local Seven Fifty-four. I'll be speaking more on a strategic plan. As we can see here.
That's upside down.
Perfect, I was facing you guys. It'll make it easier to read the notes.
And if you could zoom out, no, just move it, move it down a little bit.
I'm more focused on the photo here. This is on page nineteen of the GIS study that we provided you. As you can see, all the blue, this is the new water district. We can actually add a whole bunch of blue right here to this convention center, because we'll see a large growth here with the two-story, thirty-eight-million-dollar expansion that we'll be seeing here. Another map inside this plan was on page seventy-seven. This focuses on the concentration of initial unit responses over four minutes. NFPA seventeen-ten is a general consensus, and that says that we would want to have a four-minute response time in all directions. This is kind of like a heat signature map. So, obviously, in between Station eleven and thirteen, you see a hot zone. That means we have longer than four-minute response times in that territory. And then approaching this downtown and Ebor area of the station, remember, this is prior to residents, office workers, and hotels being occupied inside this water district. This is map twenty-seven, I believe it's on page seventy-seven or seventy-eight of the GIS study. I'll pull it down here for you. The red dots are the current fire stations inside the city. To achieve this seventeen-ten compliance of four-minute response times in all directions, all the blue dots would be new fire stations. That's seventeen new stations, you've heard that before. But one of the notes on this page says, "Although it is not economically feasible to develop and staff a large number of fire stations all at once, these results can be used as a roadmap to where future fire stations should be developed in the city in the future. In addition, this type of analysis should be updated for the growth, development, and demand of the fire department." So, as it stands right now with the growth of the city, this is what we would need to get to. We're not asking for this overnight, but you asked for a strategic plan? The International Association of Firefighters created this plan for us. This is Tampa-specific. It's used off of census data, GIS overlay maps, dead-end road, railroads, and Wednesday at five o'clock. So, they disclose all of this in the beginning of that. When we talk about coverage, if we can zoom out here, thank you.
Upside down.
Up again. When we talk about trickle-down coverage, when Station Thirteen is out on another call, Station eleven responds in. I can speak firsthand of this. For the last nine years of my thirteen-year career, I've been assigned to Station thirteen or eleven. When thirteen is out, Station eleven responds into their territory. When a call comes into Station eleven's territory, twelve responds into eleven, nine responds into twelve, eight has to respond into nine's territory. So, what this shows is across the angle is how many calls an engine ran in their own territory. Then it shows who cross-staffs. So, Engine eleven ran twelve-hundred-and-twenty-six calls in thirteen's territory. So, when Engine eleven's out, Engine twelve has to come into eleven's territory. Then Engine nine has to come into twelve's territory, eight has to go into nine, and then three also has to travel into nine. So, this discloses the unit responses per first-alarm territory. So, it breaks down the total run numbers into where they are responding to. Asking for relief immediately, we need to start thinking outside the box. It takes years for a station to develop with design, construction, and then ultimately the ribbon cutting. Colerian Township, Ohio, and Montgomery, Alabama utilize existing structures, retail office space. The city would start leasing space, developing it into an inhabitable environment, having a bathroom, a dormitory, and an office. They would fence off a portion of the parking lot, and they'd place units in service immediately. This doesn't have to be the long-term goal, but if you want immediate relief, we could rent an office space somewhere in the Fowler, Nebraska area, or near the Bush Boulevard corridor in Florida, you're having traffic availability in all four directions for responses. We need to start thinking outside that box for immediate, but this long-term goal needs to remain. If you want to talk about a mid-to-long-term strategic plan, I feel that we need one station a year for the next ten years, and that's if we don't continue growing. Because if we're not adding fire stations to the city, the city's not standing still. We're moving backwards, because the growth of this city, as we all know it, is tremendous. So, in closing, I would just like to, as usual, thank you for your time, your interest, and your passion to keep moving Tampa forward.
Thank you very much. Any questions? If not, we'll go to Councilman Vera for his motions, and then we'll close it out and break for lunch.
And I wanted to make sure that our new fire chief, or Chief Bennett, if I may, Mr. Chair, I just.
Again, good afternoon, John Bennett, Chief of Staff. I'll be very brief, and then I'll introduce our interim fire chief. You know, first of all, again, I reiterate the fact that, you know, the mayor not only is concerned about public safety, but she specifically put sustainability and resilience for equitable delivery of services throughout the city as part of her strategic plan, and we shared that during the budget presentation. There's, you know, again, with the thirty-five-year history of public safety, I've always boiled it down to something simple that's not necessarily easy. Number one, you have to take care of the health, safety, and welfare of the staff, because they're the ones delivering that public safety service to the community. Number two, we have to define a level of service, and I think that's what the union is conveying to council, council is embracing, and I'll be working with the, with the staff of Tampa Fire Rescue to understand and help deploy that level of service that meets the needs of a growing community. And then, lastly, we want to make it equitable, which I mentioned a second ago. Every neighborhood deserves the same level of service. We did that in law enforcement, reduced crime in every neighborhood, eighty percent over seventeen years. We can do the same exact thing in the fire service with this collaborative effort that's been mentioned today. So, we stand by, ready to support. The mayor's infused, over the times that she's touched, three fiscal years, twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty, and twenty-one, with the help of council, thirty-seven million dollars into the fire department in different categories. And, you know, and that's vehicles, that's personnel, that's capital improvements. But to Councilman Vera's point earlier, in this reactionary mode, it's not going to keep up and catch up with the things that we heard today. So, with that, I would like to introduce our newly-appointed interim fire chief, Barbara Tripp, who was named by Mayor Castor yesterday in this interim hall, and we're looking forward to her leadership. Barbara?
Good morning. Good morning, council. First of all, thank you for allowing me to be here, and I'm hearing everything. Of course, I got a lot of work to do.
Closer to the microphone.
Okay, sorry. I have a lot of work to do. I'm looking forward to working with the City of Tampa, as well as the union, to try to get the, the stuff that we need for our personnel, for our citizens, as well as our employees. Of course, I do have history with Station Thirteen, I did two tours there, so I do feel the pain, and I'm looking to do whatever I can to make sure we continue to serve the public, as well as take care of our public service workers.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Councilman Goode.
Well, today, I believe, is a great moment for the City of Tampa. You know, we're using the term interim, but to have an African-American female, the first to be at the fire department, leading it, it's a historical day-to-day. So, I just don't look at that word interim, I look at, I'll be saying chief, I won't be saying interim fire chief, I'll say fire chief until something's official, something's different. But I want to thank you for your leadership throughout the years, and thank the Chief of Staff and the mayor, which I've had conversation with them about the fire department several times, and I've mentioned your name several times, too, as an up and rising who possibly could lead this department. So, for me, from the bottom of my heart, I wish you well, I know you're going to do well, and I know this community is very proud, and I'm very proud to see this moment, and that shows the commitment of the administration to make the City of Tampa and our workforce diverse, and they've been doing it, and I applaud Chief Bennett and the mayor for doing it. Again, thank you, sir, and thank you for your leadership, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I echo what Councilman Goode said. It certainly is a historical day in the City of Tampa, and we wish you all the best, and you do have a stellar reputation. I've heard it from many, many people, so know that you are very much admired for your hard work, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we go to Councilman Vera, and we'll close it out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate all the accommodation. And again, before I make this motion, this is something, like I said, that is done in a collaborative way. This isn't Vera throwing down a gauntlet going, "Hey, look at this." This is us working together for a problem like we've done on so many issues, so I'm proud to, you know, work with our friends in the administration on this, who know a million times more about public safety than this lawyer does. So, I'm going to make a couple of motions here, and I'll just put them all together. Number one, I motioned that in the next, and we can pick a date for this, in the next thirty to forty-five days, the administration come back after consulting with, I'll name myself, if I may, for Fire Station Thirteen for relief, immediate relief for Fire Station Thirteen. Second, and that comes to whatever the remedy may be, an engine, we can talk about that, and obviously in consultation with Seven Five Four. Secondly, to come back in a motion in ninety days with a report on remedying waiting times. And again, this is something that's very unique to New Tampa, since four out of the six stations with the highest level of waiting times come in the New Tampa area. Additionally, with a plan of action for stations in New Tampa, North Tampa, Channel Side, and then with discussion on a monetary path on how to get there, whatever that path may be, so that we can evaluate all of our options for that, because this is, unless if we win the lottery, this isn't, this isn't free. And then, third, I do want to come back again for a master plan vision. I don't know how long the administration would need for that, for Tampa Fire Rescue and for Tampa Police Department, so that we can identify all of our deficits within the City of Tampa, and then, again, know financially how to bridge them. So, Chief Bennett, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, if you want to opine on those proposed times.
What I would recommend, Councilman, is maybe a workshop in March. That would be the midpoint of our fiscal year, and it would give Chief Tripp and the staff a chance to work together on that.
That's a great idea. So, I'll make the motion then for a workshop in March. However, however, I will stay with the first one on, what are we, in November, mid-November?
For the first one, do you want to bring it back January fourteenth under staff reports?
Sure, let's do that, let's do that.
Could I?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Councilman Vera, let me get this off. Councilman Vera, I'm going to ask you to take those motions separately.
Sure.
So, the clerk can have them, and because they all are different, frankly, subject matters, and may have different dates.
Sure.
And also, just, you had mentioned yourself personally in one form or another in a motion.
Just for the first one.
Well, and I just wanted to ask you to be mindful of that, because if this council delegates you to do something, it may create a sunshine issue.
Okay. And that's fine, I'll say in cooperation with council, and I, and I would request, since, you know, you're always sharing boundaries, I've never done this, but for Councilman Goode to second it, since it's our shared boundary, so if you're so amenable, sir. Thank you, sir.
If you could just take them strategically and individually.
Yes, sir. So, my first, my first motion, if I may, is to come back on the first meeting in January of two thousand twenty-one with a plan of action for relief right here and right now, we can put that in the motion, for Fire Station Thirteen.
That's January 14th under staff reports.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera with a second from Councilmember Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next?
Yes, sir. Next is for a workshop, and this'll, and I'll combine these, a workshop on public safety.
March 25th?
Yes, sir. March 25th, to address the following, you know, but not limited to the following issues. Number one, waiting times for Tampa Fire Rescue, including within the New Tampa area, the building of additional fire stations in New Tampa, North Tampa next to Station 13, as well as Channel Side, and then a monetary path or bridge on how to get there.
Second.
And then additionally, if I may, for the city to discuss a master plan, which I know doesn't happen overnight, for public safety. So I'm thinking of a master plan.
Second the motion.
Mr. Chair?
We have a motion from Councilman Vera with a second from Councilman Goode. Discussion, Councilman Goode's. I'm sorry, it's Councilman Citro with the second, Councilman Goode's with the discussion.
I'm in favor of the second motion, but I would add, and Mr. Shilby, you tell me if I'm here or there with it. I know we're talking about a workshop. Would it be feasible to possibly have the downtown, the CRA, our CRA director be in that workshop, because maybe the CRA may be involved in a couple of those plans with Channel Side and Downtown?
If you want to make that part of the motion, you can as an invitation. Certainly, every council member has the right to invite whoever they wish to, to attend a workshop, and certainly under your rules, you have the right to ask that person to be able to participate if they have, if you have any questions of them.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Vera if he would mind admitting that to have the...
I am so amenable.
All right. So for March 25th, with a workshop session at 9:00 AM, the stated motion by Councilmember Vera with the invitation of CRA representative, the motion was seconded by Councilmember Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Nothing, sir.
Just a clarification from Mr. Goode. Who specifically did, or which specific CRA for the purposes of the motion?
I would say the CRA director in itself would be here. That way, the information would be, Ms. Van Loon would be here. That way, that information would be taken back to, I think Mr. Stoltenberg is the CRA chairman for Channel District. I'm not familiar who's with the Downtown, but Ms. Malone would be here, and she could bring those along if she, she chooses to do so. But as long as she's here to give, hear about some information, and we take some information for, for doing the workshop.
Well, thank you, sir.
Great.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, with, again, with the expectation at the workshop that proposals will be brought forth by the administration, working with city council, working with 754 on the aforementioned issues that I talked about.
Great. Thank you very much. Did you get that, clerk?
Yes.
We are in recess until 2:00.